Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are you? Great, I know it's a little warm. We're about to begin. So I want to encourage all of us who are on the outside to please make your way inside because we are about to begin. In less than five minutes, we will begin. In the meantime, I'm going to invite our ministers to join me on the platform. And coming up is Dr. The Honorable Dana Morris Dixon. Of course, we now have the Honorable Robert Morgan, Minister with Responsibility for Works. I'm looking around for our host MP, MP Samouda. The Honorable Matthew Samouda. And still on their way, we have the Honorable Minister of Agriculture, Minister Floyd Green, who will be joining us shortly. And I bet you can't guess who the other person is. You don't have to guess. The Minister of Tourism, the Honorable Edmund Bartlett, who will be here with us shortly. So we want to welcome our ministers to the platform. We thank you for that warm welcome. And whilst we wait, we are going to start our program this evening. And as you know, everything we do, we invite the presence of the Lord. So this evening, I have the pleasure of inviting Ms. Kenna Dodd, who will be delivering the prayer this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Let me acknowledge all protocols at this time. Proverbs 20 verse 8 tells us, "Father, fill the hearts of our government leaders with righteousness, so that their eyes can see evil and wipe it out, so that the country will be safe and peaceful." Amen? Glory to God. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your presence that is amongst us. Lord, you woke us up in our rightful minds, and we just pause for a moment to thank you. We thank you for our leaders at this time, God. You have placed them on this assignment for a time as this. You have given them the task to lead your people into the greater promises. And Lord, with you as the head of our lives, everything will be successful. As we are called here this evening, an evening of experience, knowledge, and understanding, we thank you for what you have started with the government and all that you're about to do with the leaders of this government. Lord, every mind that are here today, I pray that they will be receptive of everything that will happen here. When we are about to go back to our places aboard, I pray that you'll grant us joining mercies in no other name but in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you ever so much, Kenna. And now I invite you to stand for the playing of our national anthem. Thank you, you may be seated. Good evening once again to the beautiful people of Northeast Saint Anne. Hello? Hello, please? Good evening? All right, so I'm going to acknowledge our ministers and of course, the mayor and the councillors who are here. I want to thank you all for coming out for this very important evening of discussion. We are, we are going to begin with Minister Dana Morris Dixon. However, I want to say a few things just before we start. It is certainly a blessing for me to be here tonight. And at this stage, we are not just talking about politics. We're talking about development for our country. And we are talking about this in the context of decision time. And when we're talking about making choices, we must decide what is the basis on which we are going to choose. And what is the basis on which we are going to choose tonight, Northeast Saint Anne? What is the basis? Development, prosperity, opportunities, jobs, low crime rates, low unemployment rates. So what are you choosing? What are you choosing? What are you choosing? You're choosing Jamaica. So the theme for this evening is Choosing Jamaica: Securing Your Future. And that is what Choosing Jamaica represents. It is choosing you, choosing your future. We are indeed at a turning point in our nation's journey. And what we choose will not only shape the next five years, but will shape generations to come. And at this point, I want to pause to welcome our Minister of Tourism, the Honorable Edmund Bartlett. Now, as we ask you to choose and to choose Jamaica, we want to remind you why you are choosing Jamaica. And I think for those of you who are in the room today, it's quite obvious. But we don't take that for granted. So we want to make sure we put the matters before you so that you can make your own adjudication and see the basis on which you are choosing Jamaica. So tonight, we have five of our ministers. Minister Green is still on his way. And they'll each have unfortunately only eight minutes, just because we're in a time crunch. And we also want to make this evening about you. We're not here to talk at you. We want to give you an opportunity to talk to your ministers, ask your questions, listen to their ideas, and provide some ideas of your own. All right? So our ministers will each be given eight minutes to make the case. What is going on in their ministry? How are they implementing policies that are delivering tangible results for you? And so, as I indicated at the beginning, we are going to start with the Honorable Minister with Responsibility, or the Minister of Education and Information, the Honorable Senator Dana Morris Dixon.
Good evening, everyone. It is really good to be here. This is one of my favorite constituencies, partially because it's Matthew Samouda's. And so, it's always good to be here and it's always good to see everybody. To my colleague Cabinet Ministers, I say good evening to you. I also acknowledge the wonderful mayor and also the most hardworking councillors you can find in Jamaica who are here and who I just absolutely love. Tonight is a good night. And before I start, I've been given eight minutes only to talk about education. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it tight. But I know there are some things that you're concerned about and just I'll give you some updates about some local things and then I go broader, all right? So I'm aware of the security issue at Ocho Rios High School. And so that's the issue that has been ongoing for a while. We are working on that. Also, our Ocho Rios Primary School and all the issues there, that is being worked on. Also, exchange all age, the purchase of the land. We are very advanced in terms of moving forward on that and we are going to get that done. I also... And the reason I have to get it done is because every Monday when I see Matthew Samouda, he asks me about it. So you have a very good representative in Matthew Samouda, who is constantly, constantly advocating for you and especially the education space. He's always advocating for the schools here. And also, Geneve, you know, Stairtown, the work that you are doing is very, very important. And I need to come and visit so that I can see more of what you are up to. But tonight, I am talking about education. And we all know how important education is. I am standing here, all of your ministers are standing here because we were able to get a good education in Jamaica. The problem is that too many of our children aren't able to get the best education like we were able to get. And the goal of our administration is to make sure that no child is seen less than any other child. So I ended up going to one of the best high schools in Jamaica. And I got a great education. And when I went abroad and I went to America, they're like, "You sure you did all of your education in Jamaica?" And I had to say, "Of course I did, everything." From I was four years old, I was going to school in Jamaica and I went to university here. And people were surprised. But we have a great system here. It's just that it's not for everybody. Everybody doesn't get that access. And so the Prime Minister, our wonderful Prime Minister, said to me when I went into the Ministry of Education that our goal is to make more Andrew Holnesses, more Matthew Samoudas, more Emmartlets, more Nestor Morgans, and more me, right? So that's, that's our goal. That is our goal. We want our young people to be able to stand proud in whatever country they go. And we can do it. And I know we can do it. And so if we're talking about what we're doing in education, we are targeting the schools that have the least good performances in CXC and otherwise. So we're targeting them. And we found 56 high schools that fit that bill and 189 primary schools. So we've identified the schools that need the intervention. And what are we doing? We are providing targeted support to those children. So some of you may have seen maths camps over the Christmas or over the Easter. And I know in this constituency, many children participated. That's because we say we're not leaving those children behind. They are as important as everybody else. We're also extending the school day at those schools because we understand that children need to be at school for a longer time, especially if they need to catch up. We can't do it up to 2 o'clock. We have to take the day longer. And so we bring them in the Easter holiday. We bring them in Christmas and we work with them. In addition to all of that work that we're doing with the young people, we're putting a lot of technology in these schools. Because again, these are the schools that are not performing. And the thing I'm most proud of and that our Prime Minister has led on and directed is that for those schools, remember I told you about the schools with the underperforming children? All of those schools, every child is gonna get breakfast. Every single child in those underperforming school, every single morning of the week is going to be given breakfast. And they're going to be given lunch. So they're gonna get breakfast and they're going to get lunch. Why? Because we understand that a lot of our children who are in these underperforming schools or who don't get the results that we want, they are from families that need our support even more. And so we have to, have to give them the food and the nutrition that they need. They're not going to be able to learn when they're hungry. And so we as a government, we're putting $1 billion, $1 billion just for breakfast, just for breakfast for those children in those schools. Because we believe no child should be missing from school because they cannot afford to buy lunch. That's what we believe. And we don't just believe it, we put it in practice. So we find the $1 billion. And it's not easy to find. We find it because these children deserve it. And so you're gonna be hearing about a lot more of the interventions that we're going to be doing with those particular schools. So we're targeting them. We're not letting them go. Because every single child in those schools need to be successful. That's our goal. Now I'm gonna talk a bit about some other things. I see a lot of you in here, as to some young people, as to some older people. I'm gonna tell you some of the things that we're doing. So if you have children or grandchildren, please go and spread the word about what we are doing for young people in the Ministry of Education. So let me start, is a whole heap, tertiary scholarships. Last year, we gave over 2,200 children tertiary scholarships. And these are for children who obviously want to make something of themselves. They want a degree, but they don't have the money. And so we funded 2,200 students. Every single MP got $3 million to distribute to students. In addition to that now, I'm gonna talk about some Heart programs. Because for all of you here, you need to know what we're doing at Heart. Heart is now free. The Prime Minister made it free. And that was a beautiful, beautiful move by our Prime Minister. But we don't just stop there. We're doing some more. When we look on this belt here, the Tourism Belt, you see a whole heap of hotels to come. And Minister Bartlett is gonna talk about all the hotels he's building because it's him building them. So he is gonna talk about that. But what it says is that we need a lot more construction workers. And everybody called me, all the construction companies called me and said, "We don't have enough people to work in construction." So what are we doing? We're launching an expanded apprenticeship program for those who want to do construction in this belt. So this is from this parish of Saint Anne all the way to Westmoreland. So anyone who wants to do construction, we have a special program for you. We're looking for 300 young people to start with and they're going to get hands-on training. And while we're training them, we're gonna give all of them between $13,000 a week and $16,000 a week. Now, tell me which government has done that? Has been so generous? And it don't stop there. So that's for those who want to do construction in this belt here, all right? We have a care program that we're rolling out now. Because one of the things when we walked around and we listened, this administration listened to people, we'd go to meetings like this. Grandmothers would come up to us and say, "I hear Heart is free, but my grandson can't find the bus fare or the taxi fare." And so Care came out of listening to Jamaicans, listening to you because you said your children needed help. And so we developed Care where we take 1,200 children from across Jamaica and we give them $15,000 a month to help with transportation. And then we still give them the $13,000 a week in stipend. Again, that's not, that wasn't just our initiative. That was your initiative because as you tell us that you have young people who are on the corner, who not doing anything and even though Heart freed, they can't go because they don't have bus fare. So we solve that. Then we have a lift program. And for lift, that is where we take the school leavers who have subjects. So if they have five subjects and they can't move on right away to university or something, we give them a job. Now, in many of your families, getting five CXC's was hard for them. It was a pressure for them, but they did it. And they need to be rewarded for it. And so we have a lift program where we take 500 high schoolers across the country and we pay them, listen to this, $85,000 a month because they have five subjects. And I know you're sitting there and you're thinking, "How the government do so much? And I'm not giving you everything tonight? I wanna giving you some of the things that we're doing." It's a lot of things. I don't think any other government has been able to do the amount of things we have been doing. And we don't stop there. So we've heard the Prime Minister say that STEM is important. We want scientists, we want mathematicians, we want engineers. We have a lot of those programs in Heart. Heart have programs that people never hear of. We have things, any of you ever heard of mechatronics? That's a big thing globally, you know? And optoelectronics and the aerial robotics? All those things are free at Heart. And so what we've said is, given this is the way of the future, this is what the world is demanding, let's encourage the young people to do those programs. And so in addition to it being free, we've said, "If you get to level four, we just write you a cheque for $300,000." That is us saying, "This is something good. This is an area you need to go in. No questions asked," and that is for them. So let's say they want to start a little business. $300,000 can go a long way. And so we believe in the young people. We also have a Tools for Trade program. If you go to Heart and you do hairdressing, for example, and you want to leave and you want to buy your dryer or your other equipment, we give a contribution. Once you get to level four, no questions asked, we write you a cheque for $50,000 to go and get your tools. And then guess what? If you're on path or you're a ward of the state, so you're in a children's home, we write the cheque for $75,000 instead. And that has been working and they've been getting their cheques. So we encourage them to get to level four so that you can get that. And we also have, we have grants that we're giving away to young people who want to start their business. So we really believe in our young people. And as I said, it's only some things they're talking about tonight, not everything. One of the other things that prevent our children going to school is we talked about nutrition. They don't have the money for the lunch or for breakfast. And so we're fixing that in the most vulnerable schools. But then the other thing is transportation costs, especially in rural areas. It is expensive to send children to school. And again, we have listened to you and we are coming up with something. You would have seen the pretty school bus. We're working on my way here. I was talking to Minister Daryl Vaz about the 100 school bus that we need for September morning to roll out the Rural School Bus Program. This is something that we've needed for decades, but we've never done it. And finally, this administration is saying this is important. So all the children who don't go school because they can't afford transportation, we're fixing that. You're not going because of lunch and breakfast. We're fixing that. And then you need some more help with your maths and English, we're working on that too. And then you go to Heart and you want to do your programs, but you don't have no money, we give you some money for that too. This is a government that is deeply concerned about our young people and want to see them succeed. And then when you finish all of that and you get all of those benefits which some of them I never talked about and you want a house, our Prime Minister has said that at least 10% of all houses that are built by NHT must go to young people. And young people mean under 35. And that's not just talk. And it's not just talk. I feel young too, but I don't qualify as young. But we don't just talk, we do it. So if you go to Estuary 2 in St. James', you know that one, Minister? That one, 13% of all the solutions went to young people. All those units went to young people. And if we look at another one, we also have, it was 21%, actually, I'm sorry. 21% of them, so one-fifth of all the units went to young people. And then we also had another one at Union Acres. And that was where 13% of them went to young people. So we really mean it when we say that we're committed to the young people of Jamaica. We also have a lot of scholarships around. And my eight minutes, I know, almost done. But I think you want to hear the things we have for the young people, right? Sorry, Madam Chair. All right, I'm not gonna take too long. So remember I told you about construction being an issue? And we need more people in the construction sector. And so Heart is doing a program where they're trying to find apprenticeships, 300 of them, and giving them stipends. But if you want to do a degree, for example, in one of the construction areas, NHT is giving scholarships up to $1 million for one person so that they can do their degree. So if you want to go into one of the more technical areas of construction, NHT giving scholarship for that. And just last week, the Prime Minister was with the first set of awardees, showing them that this is real, it's not just talk. It's not just talk. We also had other scholarships. We gave away 607 scholarships for healthcare workers because we know we need more workers in the healthcare sector. That's $2.5 billion that will be spent over five years, giving scholarships to nurses, doctors, anesthesiologists, everybody getting scholarships, 607 of them already. We also have STEM scholarships. We need teachers in maths and science. So if any of you know anybody who want to teach maths and science, tell them that we have scholarships for them to go to Teachers College. We have 2,200 scholarships for them. In addition to that, I am very, and this is the last thing I'm gonna say tonight. How many of you have children and know of children who need a summer job? Many of us, right? So I am very happy to tell you that this year, we're going to have the whole Summer Work Program again through Heart. And so we're gonna be providing experience for young people between 17 and 29 years old. And what are they going to get? If you're in high school still, remember I said 17 to 29? So some of them may be in high school still. If you're in high school, we break it up into three-week programs, right? So it's three-week internship programs. So if you're in high school, for the three weeks, you may get another three weeks, but for three weeks, you get $40,000 for three weeks of work. If you're in sixth form, we give you $46,000 for three weeks. If you're in university in your first or your second year, we give you $52,000 for three weeks of work. And then if you're in your final year or you're doing a masters, we give you $58,500 for three weeks of work over the summer. And this is just Heart. There'll be other, there'll be other summer work programs out there. But for Heart, we are targeting a number of young people to get this. We're hoping that we can get over 4,000 young people employed across the system through this. And as I said, this is just Heart. There are other ones out there. And so what I'm trying to get at is that a lot of work going on. We're not stopping because every single child deserves us to believe in them. And we believe in every single child. And so every day, we're looking at what we can do more, what we can give more, how we're going to help them even more. And that's the commitment of this administration led by Andrew Holness. And we are not going to stop. We are not going to stop until every single child in Jamaica feels that they truly see a bright and prosperous future for themselves. And we're not stopping. And we need some more time to do more of this work. And I hope that all of you will give us some more time to make sure that our children can walk with their heads high, can live the kind of life that we may not have been able to live, but that they deserve. And they, we believe this is real and this can truly happen. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
Can we give a better round of applause for the minister? Were you able to keep up with all of those issues, announcements that she made? Were you able to keep up? All right, I'm just gonna give you a quick fire rundown, a summary. She said they're gonna work on STEM education. Heart free up to the associate degree level, you catch that? Expanded apprenticeship program, you catch that? NHT scholarship, you catch that? Breakfast and lunch for vulnerable students, you catch that? Breakfast and lunch for vulnerable students, you catch that? Scholarships, you catch that? Heart programs expanded, you catch all of that? One million and one reasons to do what? Choose Jamaica. If you'll give me an opportunity, I'd like to extend and acknowledge once again by name His Worship, the Mayor, Councillor Michael Bell-Navis. Please give him a round of applause. Councillor for the Exchange Division, Mr Ian Isaacs. Councillor for the Lime Hall Division, Mr... I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Miss, Mrs Geneva Gordon Bailey. And Councillor for the St Anne's Bay Division, Mr Dallas Dickinson. And of course, I'll also use this opportunity to welcome the Head of the St Anne Chamber of Commerce, Mr Ransford Davidson. Alright, so I am now going to introduce to speak a minister who has one of the biggest and most impactful portfolios. Can you guess which minister this is? Okay, I said one off, one off. So this is the minister who's sparking up things all across Jamaica. And everybody know about Spark, right? So I know you were complaining about the potholes. Now you're probably complaining about a little traffic delay, but guess what? It's Sparks, you cannot blame the minister. Progress sometimes causes a little inconvenience. So please help me to welcome the Minister with Responsibility for Works, Mr The Honorable Robert Morgan.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. As I was coming here this evening, I felt good for the people of Lime Hall who are finally getting some roadwork done in their community. I feel good for the people of Tanglewood, whose road gonna start in June. I feel good for the people of Paradise Street in Bread Nut Hill, whose work gonna start this month. As a matter of fact, it's next week. The Chinese people said they're gonna start it next week, Minister Samouda. I'm not going to talk about Chinese people. Last Minister talk about Chinese people, get himself in problems. I want to associate myself with the people of Content Gardens, Falklands, and the general Ochores area and St Anne's Bay area, where we are currently or about to start doing some very well-needed patching. And there are many other communities in this constituency. And the Parish of St Anne, which has over the last six months seen significant roadwork taking place in their communities. I am not saying that we have fixed every road, but I will say as a government, we have fixed more roads than any other government in the history of Jamaica. I'm really honoured to be here with you this evening. Honoured to see professionals here. I see young people here, elderly. I see your leadership, both from the parish council and church. And I want to say thank you very much for welcoming us to your beautiful town of Ochores and your wonderful constituency headed by my friend and brother, the Honorable Matthew Samouda. Somebody say, Ed Bartlett is sitting beside the Prime Minister in the front of the bus. Nestor paved the road and Matthew have the waters of water the place. But I stand here not just as a Minister of Works. I stand here as a proud country MP. There's a difference, you know? Because country people have more road than everybody else. And them have more bad road than everybody else. So I have this great duty as the Minister of Works to not only fix the roads in urban areas like Ochores, but also to think about places like Chalky Hill, where the people constantly have complained over the years. And I can tell you that we have a plan for Chalky Hill. I remember the days when I was a student at the University of the West Indies. And we were on student loan and sometime, we never really have much. But deep down in our hearts, we always felt that as students, one day, we could make Jamaica better. Many of our colleagues are now overseas. They contribute to Jamaica in different ways. But many of us who stay here made the ultimate sacrifice and chose Jamaica. And I want to thank the diaspora who have been builders of our nation. But today, I want to focus on a lot of us who chose Jamaica in a different way. We chose Jamaica as the place to live, work, raise our families, and pursue prosperity. In Parliament recently, I revealed to the country a statistic. I said that in 2013-14 budget, the previous administration for the whole entire country under NWA spent less than seven hundred million dollars on road, bridge, sidewalk, gully. You want me to repeat that? Between, in 2013-14, the previous administration spent less than seven hundred million dollars on road, bridge, gully, drain. Now, the NWA is responsible for five thousand kilometers of road. And we only spent less than seven hundred million dollars on that five hundred kilometer of road, plus the parish council road that we help out with from time to time. Can anybody guess how much money this government spent on roads last financial year? Who, right? Last financial year, we spent eight point seven billion dollars on road infrastructure. I ain't no good at maths, but me'll take out my phone and me go calculate how much time seven hundred million can go into eight point seven billion. Who can help me? We have spent, me not make no mistake, them call me up for a read, they say, the Minister can't count, you know? We have spent twelve times more on road infrastructure in Jamaica last year than the other people spent in 2013-2014. Why have we been able? Yeah, man, you can clap on your holiness for that, man. But there's a deeper story behind that eight point seven billion dollars. Because I put it to you, my senior minister Bartlett, that even if they wanted to spend the eight point seven billion dollars, they could not spend it because they did not have the money. But ask yourself the question, how come they did not have the money? We had Audley Shaw. We had Dr Nigel Clark. And now we have the lovely Favour Williams. All three of them have done something together that since independence, many finance ministers have had a difficulty doing. Does anybody know what that is? It's called fiscal responsibility. And from fiscal responsibility, we have been able to balance our budget, raise more revenue without increasing taxes, and take that revenue and spend on your roads. This is what choosing Jamaica is about. Spend the people money upon the people things. And this administration, though not raising taxes, has now begun one of the largest road rehabilitation programs in the history of the country. Forty-five billion dollars to be spent on six hundred community roads. Not main road, you know? Community road where you live. Where you live, where you live. Community roads that some of them have not been fixed since the nineteen eighties. Who can tell me when was the last time Paradise Street was repaired properly? Me not talk patching. And you know, me not too young again, you know? So if you say I weren't alive a long time, that. Who can tell me when was the last time this steer, steer town road was fixed properly? And when me say properly, you know, me not mean patch. Me not mean, when you look upon it, it come in like the color where them wear, you know, in a independence or them a dance upon the stage. Well, that's something the name, the national bandana with one color here, so one color there, so one patch look there, so one patch look there, so. The Spark Road is a comprehensive. Okay, my friend. The Spark Program, unlike other road rehabilitation program, is a program where we're gonna fix your road to the highway standard. Does anybody understand what I mean by that? Because when me say we are gonna fix it to the highest standard, you know, people don't understand. So me I say we'll fix it to the highway standard. What does that mean? Proper drainage. It means say, instead of one inch of asphalt, you're getting five, six inch of asphalt. It means that instead of the V-drain only going two inches below the asphalt, it goes one foot below the asphalt. It means that if the contractor fix the road and six months later the road mash up again, him not getting money. There was a time in our country where a man come and fix a road. And the man them at the bar would laugh and say, watch him a fix the road. All him a do a fix, if he come back, come fix it six months later. Those days are gone. Those days are gone. The standards that we have implemented to fixing roads in Jamaica have never been seen in many years in our communities. But why have we decided to do this? We could have get more vote by patching every road in Jamaica. I like me I tell? We could have take the forty-five billion dollar and say we're gonna do pothole free by 2023. Like some man did say pothole free by 2003. But we never said pothole free. We said Jamaican people deserve good things. Rural people deserve good things. The people of North East St Anne deserve good things. And good things is good road, good infrastructure. So each constituency held consultations where councillors were present, MPs was present, church leaders. You have people from the neighbourhood watch. And they all came together and say, we have these roads that we think are the most important roads. Then they came and they chose ten. Because some people all have fifty road, you know? But we don't have the budget to fix all the roads now. So we say, let us start with ten. And then we came back and said, we are gonna before September, fix four out of the ten. So by September, you should have four brand-new roads in your communities in this constituency. As I said before, this month we starting with Paradise Street. Steer Town is coming up. Marcus Garvey Way is coming up. Bread Nut Hill, Eltermites, Farmers Heights, St Anne's Bay to Lime Hall Square. Steer Town Bypass. And I can say to you, that is not all that we have done on the roads. And I see my friend over there WhatsApping me saying I need to wrap up. But I have a little bit more to talk about. When was the last time you guys went to Jaxall? Or tried to drive through Jaxall? You remember ten years ago? Jaxall was bush. Who remember? Since we have been in power, Jaxall has become like a small city. I hear over a thousand houses out there. I hear you have KFC, Nutzford Express, Pizza Hut. Quarts, quarts in Jaxall. Now, with development comes traffic. With development comes traffic. And one of the plans we have to develop our country is that we're gonna make it easier for persons to travel around Jamaica. A big part of the reason why we did the South Coast Highway Improvement Project, which is from St Anne, which is from Harbour View to Port Antonio, is to make it easier for people to travel from Kingston to Portland. Coming next is the Port Antonio Bypass, which is gonna start in June. We're also gonna be doing a bypass from the highway all the way bypassing Jaxall. What that does is that it's gonna, if you want to go to Jaxall, you can go. But let's say you wanna go somewhere else in St Anne, and you don't wanna go through that traffic. For those of you who know the South Coast, we're gonna be doing the Spurtry Bypass. For those of you who know Hanover, we're gonna be doing the Lucy Bypass. And some of you who go to Montego Bay will see that we're now doing the Montego Bay Perimeter Road. Have you ever seen so much road infrastructure development in Jamaica? But while we're building roads, we're not just building roads for car drive pan. We're building roads to improve the lives and economic viability of the people who live in these communities. Let us use the example of St Thomas. There was a time where if you live in St Thomas, people afraid if you come look for you. Boy, me not drive come the center, you have to go meet me at Harbour View. Now, if you want to purchase a piece of land in St Thomas, you cannot even find it to purchase. Because of the road in St Thomas, the people's lives in St Thomas has improved significantly. Not only that, but when we said, Minister... Not only that, but when we said Minister Bartlett, we're gonna give the people a new town center. Many people say it will never happen. When Prime Minister went out there and broke ground at the old Goodyear factory for the Morant Bay Town Center, the opposition say it was a pie in the sky. You know, Prime Minister is opening the town center tomorrow. That is what Choose in Jamaica is about. So when we say we're improving lives, it's not just highways, it's community roads, but it's also finding ways to make your lives better. For example, the sidewalks in Otterios. We are starting a program to uplift town centers, pedestrian crossings, railings, sidewalks, better signaling. For example, a blind person walking down the road in Otterios, he doesn't know where he is. We have a new technology where when he touches the road with him sticking, can feel say him about to reach a pedestrian crossing. We have already implemented that on Grange Lane in Portmore. And every single road we're building in Jamaica is gonna have tactile response for persons who are visually impaired because they are Jamaicans too. Many times people are walking on the road and there is no railing. We're gonna, we started with Halfway Tree, where we're fixing the railings in Halfway Tree. We're doing better signage in places like Barbican. And Otterios is one of the ten towns that we're gonna do significant improvement in pedestrian use of the town. So while I could stand there and I could list every road at the patch and I could list every Spark Road that we have started, what I want to remind the audience this evening is that this is not just about asphalt, gravel and paint. The reason why we do this, the reason why we're spending so much money on our infrastructure is to improve the lives of the people of our country. Think about the young lady who just buy her underfit. And as soon as she drive out of Fontana, she lick one pothole and the front wheel bust, rim bend up, twenty thousand dollar. I think about that when I make policy decisions. How do people feel when they drive on our roads? I know that it's not perfect and it's something that keeps us up on a nightly basis, which is why we work so hard. This is why we had the Emergency Road Patching Program Minister Samora. Where you, many of you in Christmas were frustrated, say why them a patchy road in a Christmas? We were patching the road in Christmas because we were tired of people suffering from pothole. And the roads have been in such a bad condition for so long that we had to declare it a national emergency. And what I wanna say to you before I leave here tonight is when you're thinking about the Jamaica that you want to see, I want you to look back at what we have done and think about the Jamaica we have become. Think about where we're coming from and think about where we are now. When I came here the last time and I turn off the highway, I never see that building there. What the building Matthew, on the right hand side? As you turn off the highway. Now Bush did it two months ago. That is what this government is about. Development, 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 development. So thank you ladies and gentlemen. I have a lot more to say and I'll be back. But I wanna remind you, as you're making your decisions, think about the party, the government that continues to choose Jamaica. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
You know what's so interesting about what has just been said? Is that these are not announcements, these are things that are actually happening. And it's a lot of information. It was, was hard to keep track of Minister Maurice Dixon, so much information. We can't tell it all to you in one sitting. So you know what I encourage you to do? Follow the ministers on social media. Follow the Prime Minister. Follow JIS. It's a lot of information, a lot of things are happening in your country. But it's important that you understand that you have a duty to arm yourself with information. The information is there, so you have to go out and get it. Now, I want you to make way for a discussion on food. So you know who I'm gonna ask to come to the lectern now? We're gonna talk about food security. We're gonna talk about investments we're making in agriculture. Minister Green is pushing some of the most transformative advancements in Jamaica in agriculture that we have seen for many years. From irrigation to storage systems. I don't want to talk about it, I'm gonna allow him because I don't want him to not have anything to say. So at this point, please help me welcome the Minister of Agriculture, Minister Floyd Green.
Thank you, thank you very much, Lady Kim. Uh, colleague ministers, but you will allow me to single out our host, the Member of Parliament for North East Saint Anne, Matthew Samora. My friend, my brother. Why? Place look good. Place is looking nice. Mayor and councillors, all the people who've turned out tonight. Good evening, everybody. Alright, so much ground has already been covered. Your Member of Parliament don't come yet. The best tourist minister in the entire world don't come yet. So I'm gonna try and keep my thing nice and short. And what we will do, whatever they'll cover, we will deal with in the question and answer segment. Because we have come here today to engage you. To engage you in a conversation about the future of Jamaica. And what future do you want to see? Remember, what we do now is not just for us. What we do now is for generations to come. To ensure that the lives of our children and our children's children, that they are better off than we found it. That is why we're here discussing Choose in Jamaica. And I get to talk about the most important thing in the entire world. And that is food. Because no matter what you do in life, no matter how big you get, no matter how much money you make, you all have to eat. So can we have a round of applause for our farmers and our fishers who are out there working for us? I like to start these engagements by saying, a lot have been said over the years around agriculture, around fisheries and also around mining, the portfolios that are under my charge. But I always say to people, when anybody comes to have a discussion with you, especially about the problems in agriculture, the problems in fisheries, the problems in mining, ask them what have they done to fix them. Because we know some of the problems in agriculture have been around from before I was born. Our grandparents were talking about them. And a lot of people know talk, a lot of talk. But when you ask them what they have done in their time to fix the problems, they can't answer you. We have looked at all of the challenges facing agriculture. And we have said we're going to take a transformative approach to agriculture, fisheries and mining. And probably under each area, I'm going to tell you just two or three initiatives. We all know that the climate has changed. We know that the weather patterns change, no true? The drought is longer. When we get the rain, we get the more intense periods of rain. So it is harder for a farmer to depend on rainfall to be profitable. So for a long time, we have been saying expand access to irrigation. Ensure that the farmers can have water right around the clock. And people have talked about it. In fact, when I looked during the period between twenty twelve and twenty sixteen, what they did about it, unfortunately, what they did was to make a plan. But they didn't implement the plan. This government are the implementers. We are the action oriented government. And over the last eight years or so, we have spent over ten billion with a B. The biggest investment ever in irrigation in Jamaica has happened under this government. We have dug new wells, we have put in new pipelines, we have commissioned new systems. I'm not telling you what we're going to do. In fact, last two weeks, the Prime Minister was with us in a place in Clarendon called Paranassus, where we commissioned an irrigation system, bringing water to over several hundred acres of land so that those farmers will now have water right around the clock. And one of the reasons why we are focused on some of those initiatives is genuinely to help our farmers. And Saint Anne is one of the parishes that I believe has the most potential in relation to agriculture, in relation to fisheries, and we all know your history in relation to mining. So what we have done in Saint Anne, Saint Anne, if you do not know, is one of our big Irish potato growing belts. In fact, last year directly Matthew, we helped over four hundred farmers in giving them inputs to plant Irish potato. But when I came into Saint Anne and I looked at the Irish program, I realized the Irish program does well when rainfall, but when rainfall, you have a problem. So you know what we did? We went into Heinstadt. And we identified that area. And we dug a catchment pond to serve the farmers in that area. And last year, when everybody are complain about rain and I went down there to look, the farmers are celebrating, call them have water from the catchment to use it to drive their agricultural enterprise now in Heinstadt. And what we are doing, we are looking at all areas in Saint Anne. And you have some wells that used to be used for mining that are no longer being utilized. And we are on a drive to recommission those wells and put them into water production for agriculture. So that ultimately, Saint Anne is a parish that must be able not only to feed itself, not only to feed every tourist, but to really help us feed Jamaica in a very big way. The other thing I recognized when I came to Saint Anne, you have a lot of land that is underutilized. So we are doing two things. We found some land that people were farming on, but they didn't have any documents for the land. A lot of those land are government land. And you know what happen when you farm on a piece of land that you don't have the document for? You put in some investment, you know, but you go and hold back because you don't know if next week a man go come. So we got the Agro Invest Corporation. We went to the NLA and we said, you know what, transfer that land to us. And we have now given leases for over sixty farmers to ensure that they can farm the land without any issues because they now have tenureship on that land. Additionally, I spoke to Matthew. And if you know you're a Member of Parliament, you know he does not stop. He is a strong advocate. And we said Saint Anne is missing a agri park. You have a lot of people who want to farm, but they can't find land with irrigation, with storage to be able to do their farms. So we spoke to the Jamaica Box Site Mining Company and our CEO is here Donna Howe. And we have formed a partnership with the AIC. And we are pleased to announce that we are going to put six hundred acres of land into the first ever agri park in Saint Anne up in Lidford. That agri park will come with irrigation. It will come with a road network and it will come with storage. So that when you farm and you have a glut, you don't have to throw it away. You don't have to depress your prices so you can't get return on your investment. You can store it and extend the shelf life so that right around the clock, we will have a supply. Because we know how agriculture go, no true? You farm the vegetable and it come in plenty, because everybody have farm the same time, yes? And then what happen? The price go down and the farmers don't get the return on their investment. Two weeks later, all the vegetables are gone. And then what happen? The price go up and the consumer complain that the price is too high. The only way to fix it is through storage. So we are spending this year one billion dollars on putting in storage across Jamaica to ensure that our farmers can get a good return on their investment. So that is agriculture. Let me jump quickly to fisheries. Because sometimes you forget that Saint Anne is a big fishing parish. You have some of the best fishermen and women out there. But we know the challenges. We know that over the years, there has been some overfishing. So they're not getting the sort of returns that they used to get. And governments have come and they have spoken about it. But your government is doing something about it. Let me tell you what we have done. We have identified three fishing beaches in Saint Anne. We have trained fishers from those beaches in what we call long line fishing. Not only have we trained them, the top three from the training, they get engine, they get lines, they get GPS so that they can go further out. Why we want them to go further out? You know what Minister Bartlett want in the hotels? Him want Marlin. Him want Mahi Mahi. Him want Wahoo. All of those things you can find in our sea. But the fishermen have we know how we catch them. And I can tell you, you say since we do the training and I talking about what we're going to do. I talking about what we're doing. If you want us tomorrow, just go down to Discovery Bay Beach. Ask to Black God, tell them say, I'm missing you. I ask him what him catch since week. Because since we do the training, every day me get picture. Marlin, Mahi Mahi. And when I go down there and I meet with him and I say, how is it going? How is the seal? You can't give me one. The man say, boy, Minister, you have to go circle me back. Because I'm telling you the truth. You see the, you see the villa them up there, so? Then just take it fresh off of the boat. We are transforming the lives of our fishers by training them to do what they need to do to live. And we are on a drive, and I've said to Matthew, we are on a fishing beach rehabilitation program. And we're going to rehabilitate the beaches in Saint Anne. We're working with the Jamaica Box Site Institute and the Jamaica Box Site Mining Limited. We're working with National Fisheries Authority so you can tell the fishers that we are moving to ensure they have better conditions to ply their wares. Last one, mining. We can't talk about mining all night. One aspect I want to talk about, two aspects. The Jamaica Box Site Mining Limited is a Saint Anne company. It was formed to hold our box site assets. If you don't know, the Jamaica Box Site Mining Limited are the owners of Reynolds Pier. And I think you should give them a big round of applause. Because when the issues happen with Otterios, it is the Reynolds Pier that has taken on the cruise ship. And we haven't just taken it on. Just the other day, Minister Bartlett, we did a nice, a nice mural so that when people come to Jamaica, they know that they have landed in a wonderful place here in Otterios. But I have said to the Jamaica Box Site Mining Limited, box site is one thing, but we need to look at other forms of investment. We have a lot of land, we have a lot of old buildings. We are going to build a logistics hub in Saint Anne so that we can generate more jobs for the people of Saint Anne. Saint Anne has wonderful connectivity. Highways lead here and we have the land. So we're going to put in the infrastructure so all sorts of. so all sorts of businesses can come into our logistic hub and employ the people. So we have an employment plan through the Jamaica Boxsite Mining Limited. So I want you to appreciate, in every area of government, we are thinking about you and how we can create a better Jamaica for you. We're trying to ensure that our farmers can make more money, that our fishers can have greater wealth and that transitioning from box site to provide greater employment for the residents. So as I close, I say to all of you, when we go out to talk about the work of this government, we can hold up our head high. We don't have a campaign on what we're going to do. We can campaign on what we have done. And for the first time in the history of our country, you have a government that can campaign on the work that it has done. I know some of them had hurt them because every day, our prime minister open something new. I break ground for something new because we have put in the work. There is more work to be done. This is the government to get it done. God bless you, everybody.
Thank you ever so much, Minister Green. Just last night, I was watching a discussion on the World Economic Forum. And the topic of the discussion was that the world urgently needed young farmers. And based on what Minister Green has said, agriculture in Jamaica is exciting again, isn't it? Doesn't it sound like something that our young people can become interested in, isn't it? So from farming to fishing, Minister Green is making agriculture exciting. All right, we're now going to introduce the man that you call when you need a clean solution to a big problem, whether it is environmental issue, climate resilience issue, sustainable development issues, and most importantly, and the one you care most deeply about. What is that? Water. We're going to invite the minister with responsibility for water, Minister Matthew Samuda.
Good evening, residents of Northeast Saint Anne, my extended family. It is always a joy to be with you. But I want to thank you firstly for your hospitality to my colleague ministers and friends who are here with us. Indeed, allow me to acknowledge Minister Nestor Morgan, Minister Floyd Green, Minister Dana Dixon, and indeed the man himself, Minister Edmund Bartlett. Allow me also to acknowledge my team. His worshiped mayor, councillor Michael Bellnavis, councillor Dallas Dickinson, councillor Geneva Gordon Bailey, aka Miss D, and of course councillor Ian Isaacs. Allow me to also acknowledge you who have journeyed from near and far to have a very active and strong discussion about where Jamaica was, where Jamaica is, and where Jamaica will be based on the significant work, the heavy planning and the heavy investment being made in your future because we collectively have chosen Jamaica. Now, I don't want my colleagues to mistake the warm welcome that you have given them for weakness because Northeast Saint Anne people take their business very seriously, ladies and gentlemen on the platform. So I assure you, the warm welcome is not to be mistaken for no serious questions coming. Because I see a lady behind the cameraman by the name of Claire and I see her make whole heap of notes and I line up for us questions. I see people in the gallery, I write down notes and I line up for us questions. I see deputy mayor lining up for us some questions because I know some particular issues in his division. Saint Anne people not play, they're very active and strong and they're very focused on their future prosperity and the future for their children. But what I do hope is that it is understood for those who are here with us and those who are listening on radio and those who are following us online that this Choose Jamaica forum is indeed a serious discussion that is being facilitated for you to ask your questions, for you to hear of the plans and to understand where their challenges and what is to come. Because we don't intend to sugarcoat anything. We're telling you as it is, we're telling you what we're doing now and what we're going to do tomorrow and how it is going to benefit you. Now, just this afternoon, I left a function to come here. I left a function with the Prime Minister in eastern Saint Andrew, right on the boundary with southeast Saint Andrew. And we broke ground on an integrated infrastructure project that will see 1.2 billion Jamaican dollars invested in new pipelines and sewer capacity. And I was thinking as I was leaving, how I would explain the importance of that to the residents of a place called Lime Bottom who have their own challenges. How would I explain the fact that we will break ground in Castleton for a few hundred million dollars of water infrastructure for the people of Saint Mary to the people in Hermitage, Mr. Dyer? How will I explain that, yes, we have extended the utility footprint in Minister Green's own constituency with a new pipeline in middle quarters for the first time ever, them getting portable water to the people in banks, Sir Dallas, that are waiting on that pipeline issue to be corrected? You see, the question is always going to be asked in Bread Nut Hill, along Great Pond in Dunsville, how is it relevant that you have fixed in large part the problem that existed last year in the Grill, Sir Ed? You see, when we commissioned the system recently in Rhine Park, I get calls from persons on Chin Street about when we're going to lay their pipe. So a discussion such as this is to bring you into our confidence to understand how we are going to fix your issues nationally and how that will translate for you locally. Because ultimately, if your lived experience in whichever part of Northeast Saint Anne you live is not corrected and not improved, then you don't want to hear about the work that we're doing in Clarendon and Juneau Crescent, even though those persons have waited for over 50 years. So ladies and gentlemen, I hope you will allow me to have a brief 10-minute discussion because I'm not going to cut into Minister Bartlett's time. You see me all the time, but certainly, I believe there are some things that need to be understood as it relates to water, the environment and climate change's impact on both. Minister Green told you and you all know, certainly you feel the heat here tonight. The climate has changed. Ultimately, Jamaica is on the front lines of the climate crisis. Now, what does that mean? In 2022, Jamaica experienced its worst drought statistically ever. In 2023, we then experienced our third worst drought statistically ever. Last year though, nationally, we didn't experience the worst drought. Negril to Trelawney experienced its worst drought at a parish level. And then in the very same year, we all remember Hurricane Beryl with a category five storm affecting us in June. We remember tropical storm Raphael inundating us within the same year. But what's often not discussed is that in 2023, Jamaica experienced its hottest day in June ever. The same winter, we had some of our coldest temperatures ever recorded in Jamaica. So the weather patterns have changed. Now, that makes water supply very, very difficult because your weather patterns are no longer as predictable as they once were. And you can't outinvest the weather. But you can outinvest the fact that for 40 to 50 years in Jamaica, we did not invest in our water distribution systems. There are too many Jamaicans that will tell you their grandmother didn't have portable water, their parents didn't have portable water. And now that they're getting older, they don't want to die and they don't want to retire in a particular area because it doesn't have portable water yet. It is why I have been proud over the last three years, colleague ministers, executive of Northeast Saint Anne friends, to work on a team that has improved water distribution to 150,000 Jamaicans. The Water Commission in 2013 could only afford to invest 300 million Jamaican dollars. Minister Morgan. 300 Jamaican million dollars can't fix the problem in Bread Nut Hill. And that's what they did for the entire country in the year of 2013. But I don't like to look in the rearview mirror. I like to look ahead for where we are going. And ladies and gentlemen, I would like to highlight the fact that your government, because of sound fiscal management, because of well-running of the National Water Commission, this year is investing 10.1 billion Jamaican dollars in improvements, in connectivity, in storage, in processing of water for 38,000 Jamaicans who have suffered for far too long. And that is in addition to 92 million US dollars that is being spent without the government borrowing a dollar in content Saint Catherine to finally once and for all resolve the water issues in Spanish Town, Portmore and Kingston and Saint Andrew. But I always say, what about me? The communities ask, what about my community? Next week, for those who suffered last year, Minister Bartlett, in areas like Land Island in Negril, those who suffered in Lucy, those who are suffering today in Saint James, next week, your government will commence the single largest infrastructure project in water in four decades, the largest single infrastructure investment since the Yallas Pipeline, bringing water from Yallas to Kingston and Saint Andrew, where we will break ground in a new 36-inch water transmission main. And yes, we go cause whole heap of traffic and then we go cost and then we go vex. But it is still the right investment. We're going to run a new transmission main from the Martha Bray Water System right into Terminal Reservoir in Saint James. We're going to run a new water main from Lucy straight into the west end of Negril because we are leaving no Jamaican behind. And that is something we are proud of. 36-inch transmission mains are big, they're very important. It is massive infrastructure. It's a 28 billion dollar investment, councillor Isaacs. But those who live on Paradise Street, yes, they get in road and those who live on Bread Nut Hill and those who are waiting in Dunsville and councillor Bellnavis, those who are waiting in Great Pond say, what about me? I'm happy to report that in the first week of June, we will break ground on a new transmission main from Walkerswood that will bring water. It's a 6-inch main directly to the highest point of Bread Nut Hill and that will resolve the water issues for that entire corridor spanning two political divisions. Minister Green, in the same way, we are nearing completion in a place called Slype. And I'm sure, I know Saint Elizabeth people never hear about a meeting yet, and though listen, I know we are nearing completion in Slype. It is the same way councillor Isaacs. I am happy to report that we will commence work on Chin Street in relaying a four-inch pipeline to give the people of Chin Street water next week. And that work will be done directly by the NWC. It's the same reason I'm excited to break ground in two weeks on ferry to Rock Pond. Now, anybody who have family, cousin, girlfriend, boyfriend in Saint Andrew who live in Red Hills know, say Red Hills people have water problem for as long as I have been alive. If you live at the top of Cooper's Hill, this 1.4 billion dollar project is going to correct your water issues, Minister Bartlett. So finally, whether it is in Duhaney Park in Kingston and Saint Andrew or the foot of Red Hills or way up to the top, we are correcting that water issue. It's the same reason I'm excited to tell the people of Civil that, yes, that major line that you see, annoying people that Karen calls me about all the time that they're not complete with yet. That major line that we're running from Armby Bay all the way out to Landoverie will be complete in three weeks. We expect to complete all the interconnections over the next two weeks and do the pressure testing. Now, that was $100 million of pipeline for you, the people of Saint Anne. Now, somebody will say, but that's not the source for Civil. But it will now become redundancy for the people of Civil. So when the other system goes down, we will then redirect the water. That allows all of the persons who live from Wayne, Landoverie all the way back to Draxall to have a resilient new pipeline that the warranty says will give you 35 years of stable water supply coming from the bog treatment plant. It is the same reason I'm excited when I go to somewhere like Rhine Park and I have something for you, Minister Bartlett, but I'm not announcing it tonight. We have to go there first, we have to do that next week in Moby. But it's the same reason I'm excited when we correct a problem in Montego Bay because I'm excited to also correct the problem in a place called Hermitage. And Mr. D, we have sent the paperwork to the parish council. So I leave it with you. I know you will not allow it to carry too long because we will be investing through the Rural Water Supply Limited in the supply lines that are desperately needed for the people in Hermitage and Davistown. And that is a firm commitment that process has started. You see, the water discussion, when you tell Jamaican people $10 billion investing and they say, but you don't reach me yet. It's difficult sometimes to explain that, yes, man, I reach you yet, but we are come. Because for 50 years, no one was investing in water catchment, water storage, water processing, water pumps, water distribution. You see, rainwater and river water is free, but to catch it not free, to store it not free, to process it to make sure it clean, not free. To distribute it is not free, which is why you need sound management of your economy so that we can invest in the comfort, to give you rather the comfort in your homes, to give Dr. Davidson's members the confidence to invest in expanding their business because they will have water, because I need your businesses to invest at a faster rate, Dr. Davidson. Everybody here have some resumes to give you because we're not going to allow unemployment to reign in Northeast. So we have matters to discuss. But we are investing in water and investing in sewer capacity at an unprecedented rate because we want business expansion. We're investing in water and sewage because we want you to have the comfort in your homes. We're investing in water because nobody not supposed to be out of Bat Pan, we want you for shower. Now, Labour, the Labour Party government, led by the most honorable Andrew Michael Holness, is not shy about its commitment to solving the 50-year-old water crisis. We asked the World Bank for help. We didn't just sit back and say we have all the expertise, Minister Green. We asked them to look at the problem for us. We said, too many farmers don't have irrigation, too many households don't have water in them pipe, too many places still have sewage issues. And we brought them in last year and they did an analysis for us. And they said, we need to invest $5 billion US dollars to achieve water security and resilience by 2030. Well, I am happy to report that we have queued up investments close to $1 billion US dollars thus far. It is a major achievement, a major achievement. But in doing so, we are not going to forget the small micro issues. It is why the Rural Water Supply Limited, who used to get about $80 million a year, some fuddy-duddy money when you consider the scale of rural water problems in Jamaica. This year, we are investing over $800 million into small rural communities to improve your water supply. We're not just waiting on the grand pipelines like what we're doing in Moby. We're not waiting on big solutions for places like Hermitage and places like Farmers Heights, councillor Dickinson. We're not waiting on some big plan to be written by the World Bank for places like Dunsville. We are investing at an unprecedented rate to ensure that you have water in your pipes. We're investing at an unprecedented rate in irrigation to ensure also that some sources of portable of portable water that are being used for farmers can go into households, as Minister Green does his development. You see, North East Centane is a microcosm of Jamaica. Every industry, good and bad, you can think of anywhere in the country, is represented here. We have the best of the best, and in some times, we have the worst of the worst, and we will have to work with Minister Dana Dixon to ensure that those who have been left behind and have found themselves behaving in the worst ways can get the education that they need and the skills training through the Heart Programme. We will have to work with Minister Morgan and understand that infrastructure development, when we go to widen Draxall and we go to build the bypass, will cause some dislocation, and we will need your understanding and patience. Because as much as you vex about traffic now, when dust going into people's house, them go call and them go cuss. When they're in traffic because a tractor go across the road and widening the road, they go still cuss, but we going need you to work with us to make sure that we can do the infrastructure investment, Minister Morgan. We're going to need, we're going to need you to work with us to ensure that our young people don't think that they're limited to any one industry, that they know that we are providing the opportunities for them, for the agri park, Minister Green. And we're going to need you to listen attentively, to work with Minister Bartlett as he revolutionizes the tourism industry, which will trigger the re-imagination, the total redevelopment and redesign of Ocho Rios, of Exchange, of Draxall, of Civillands, of Senans Bay, to make sure that it is the place in the Caribbean. Yes, Minister Bartlett, we know you represent Mobe, but you know, we have to passing Christian in Pickney Foss. This is the jewel of Jamaica and the jewel of the Caribbean. We need to invest at an unprecedented rate to make sure that Devon do have no question for ask in two years at No Town Hall. We need to invest at a particular rate, so that all of our Juta and maxi drivers who are represented here do have no question for ask in two years. I know you have questions tonight. But we are unlocking every sector of government in a very systematic way. Your government is active and strong. I do hope you understand with the investments and with the discussions that we're having today, that we have explained sufficiently to you how we are choosing Jamaica. And I thank you for coming out this evening. I will pause until the question and answer and make way for my senior minister, my political mentor, Minister Bartlett. I don't know that I'm the one calling you up, Minister Bartlett, but I am greeting you well. But ladies and gentlemen of North East Centane, ladies and gentlemen of Centane who have joined us, who are not from the constituency, you know, we always welcome you into North East. And ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls who are listening on the world wide web or on the radio, come check we in North East Centane, it's a lovely place. Every business owner, whether you are in Westmoreland, St James, Kingston, Manchester, Clarendon, we have little space for you, come invest in North East Centane, we need your business. Every housing developer, we putting in the water and the sewage for you, we need more houses for our persons, our constituents, our citizens. And Minister Dana Dixon are making a special appeal. Me need my Heart Academy in Senans Bay and Ocho Rios. But ladies and gentlemen, tonight is about you and your questions, I will not take up too much more of your time, I thank you for coming out.
One of the hallmarks of Shaheeney Robbins' leadership of this constituency is that she knew everybody by name and by issue. And by what we've heard tonight from Minister Samuda, we can say the same. He knows who and where and where need water, and if it not reach you yet, it's so come, all right? And what he's done is evidence, compelling evidence of what is to come. So Minister Samuda mentioned that we have here the Minister of Tourism. But when we talk about Minister Bartlett, it is a name that is synonymous, not just with tourism in Jamaica, but with tourism around the world. So we have so many record-breaking occurrences in tourism in Jamaica under his stewardship, record arrivals, increases in training and opportunities, including houses for tourism workers. And so tonight, I have the distinct pleasure of inviting the world Minister of Tourism, but our local Minister of Tourism, Minister Edmund Bartlett.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you so much, Kimberley, for this very warm reception that you have arranged for us here in the beautiful constituency of the brilliant young Minister of Water in Jamaica, the Honourable Matthew Samuda. And a very special greeting to my colleague ministers, who have done an excellent job this evening in not only enunciating the achievements of their respective ministries, but have given you a vision, a direction, a pathway to your own future prosperity and development in Jamaica. I'm excited about what this series provides for Jamaica in terms of bringing information and knowledge to our constituents in all parts of the country, as to what in fact we are doing as a government, and how what we are doing impacts you as individuals in the communities that you reside. Because after all, all of the macro achievements that we talk about means very little unless it has micro implication in your community, in your district, and in your little house. It's very important that when I walk in Lidford and in Melford, and when I go to Exchange, or I go over into Draxall or Centane Bay, or Lime Hall, or anywhere in this constituency, the people in there feel what you're doing, know what you're doing, and relate to what you're doing. And so colleagues, when we talk about performance, I am here to tell you, as you may say, a veteran, and Prime Minister the other day say, no statesman. After nearly 50 years in public life, and the longest-serving minister, I am here to tell you that no government in the history of the country in eight years has accomplished more than the Andrew Holness administration that we have today. We are the first government that can report an unemployment situation that is 3.5%. No other government has been able, over time, to be able to report that to the country. And when we took government in 2016, in this eight, nine-year period that we're talking about, unemployment was at 13.7%. What is it today? 3.5%. That's performance of a government. And you talk about minimum wage, and some people argue, some people from another place, you know, argue that, all right, minimum wage at $16,000 a week should be more, and we say, of course, it will be more. But we are telling you that when we took it from them, it was $6,200, and today it is $16,000. And you know what that represented then? To show you how your government has worked for you to improve your standard of living and quality of life. And it don't happen to every single person, we know that. And when it happened to every single person that is on planet Earth, is when Jesus come, and you know that is to come. But as long as we are on planet Earth, we are going to have problems to solve, and our job is to solve it. And that's what Andrew Holness and the Jamaica Labour Party Government is doing. So when we took over in 2016 again, the debt, you know how much we owed? To every dollar that you work and put into the revenue of the government, we owe out there $120. And the performance of Andrew Holness' government in nine years reduce it from the $120 that you owe to $65 now, that the World Bank and the IMF told us we will have this year. Which government in our history asked the question, has been able to reduce the debt by 50% in eight years? Wow. But you know the implication of that? You heard what Minister Samuda said about how we are going to be able to get more water distributed in your community, how we are going to make sure that it's good quality water, that you continue to have the record of one of the only countries in the world as your tourism minister. When I go around and I tell them about the water in Jamaica, they say, yes, it's true, because we can turn on the tap and drink the water and everything is fine. And why Minister Morgan can spark and tell you about all the roads that are going to be fixed in your area, and why Minister Green has been able to tell you how the fisherfolks are now going to give me mahi-mahi and red snapper and more lobster. And why he's also going to give me more tomato and more lettuce and more cabbage and more pineapple and more tomatoes and more pepper rush and more all kinds of juices and jams and jellies and nectar to feed the tourists that are going to bring here. The reason is that we bring down the debt from $120 to $65, so we have money that we can spend to do those things. I just want everybody to understand that the macro figures that we talk about, the big ones, can translate into the little ones that affect you in your community. And the reason the pensioners can now be getting 4,500 and more per week as pension coming from what was 2,500 and so on, when we became government, is because we were able to bring down the debt from $120 to $65. And there's much more to come, because we have done the job for two term, but the job is not yet done. You know, you know, when I was, when I was a university student, there was an ad that a certain paint company had, Sherwin-Williams. And it had said simply that Sherwin-Williams paints brownstones in New York, and Sherwin-Williams paint Shea Stadium in the Yonkers and so on, chances are, they can do your bathroom. And so we say, we have grown the economy, we have moved the NIR from 2 billion US dollars to over 5 billion dollars today, so that our debtors look on and say, yes, we can lend you more if you want to borrow, because you're a good risk. We have done the job for you, chances are, we can take you to the next dimension. And I haven't told you about tourism yet. And I don't have to tell you about tourism, because you know what Ocho Rios was in 2016 when we came back. And you know that what Jamaica's tourism was, and what it is today, is because, first of all, when some other people were there, in their 18 years, you know how many ministers of tourism them turn over? 10. 10, how much we turn over in our time? You, you wonder why we grow exponentially and they grew anemically? And they have the nerve to talk about tourism and what they tried to do? We took this at under 2 million visitors and go through the worst disruption humans have experienced in more than 100 years, COVID-19. And when COVID came, tourism went to zero. We wake up one morning, no tourists arrive, hotels lock up, airports lock up, street vendors gone home, shoppers gone home, everything still and died. And in two and a half years, we brought in 4.3 million visitors to Jamaica and earned 4.5 billion dollars to the country. And we didn't just do that, we caused the world to take note, and they send people from all over the place to come and ask we how we do it. And them visiting you all over with camera and with tape recorder and video to take back to their country, to show them how Jamaica navigated COVID under Andrew Michael Holness and the team in the tourism ministry. So we say, if we were able to make it happen for you during the most existential threat to humanity, in what, in a nicer term, Dr Dana, who say in Anthropocene Earth, you know, that is Earth since man, the worst catastrophe that hit us was that health disruption called COVID-19, when nobody understood what they were doing, and everybody was fearful of the future, and your government took the future in them hand and navigated through that future and give you now another future of your own. And if we were able, if you remember, to navigate during the world's worst recession in 80 years, you remember that one? 2008, 2009, 2010, where the big economies of Europe and all over were capsizing, and companies were right sizing and downsizing, and Jamaica, under the Jamaica Labour Party Government, and at the time Minister Ardisha stood firm in terms of our management of the economy, and we never and we never lost a single financial institution. And your little tourism grew three percent every year during that recession. And so Sherwin-Williams again, chances are, we can take you to the next level. But we will take you to the next level because I have indicated to you that level of performance. But what has that meant for you? What that has meant is that we now employ a hundred and seventy-five thousand people directly in tourism and indirectly three hundred and seventy-five thousand. That is to say, of the one point five million people who are actively working, tourism represent twenty percent of that. So one in five of everybody who is working in Jamaica is working in the tourism-related industry. What have we done? We have said, okay, if you work in tourism, you must have a future. And you must have social security. And so our government developed and established a world-class, only of its kind, social safety net for the workers of the tourism industry. Not the workers in the hotel alone, you know? Not the workers in the craft market alone, you know? Not the worker at the hotels and the airport alone, you know? Not just the craft, the rafters and the Rio Grande and the White River alone, you know? But for everybody who employ by thirty percent or more of their income in tourism, they qualify for this world pension that we put in together. And tonight I ask, the pension plan was finished in 2022. And since 2022, and this is the beginning of 2025, ten thousand workers of the industry have registered and we have a saving of four point five billion dollars in the fund for the workers. But I want to tell you something about that because it's only eight minutes they give me. Oh, I have fifteen, good. And so we did something that the world is looking on with admiration and asking us how we do it. We establish something called the augmented worker. And you know who that worker is? Somebody who joined the pension at age fifty-nine. And they only have six years to work before retirement. And because the Andrew Holness-led government put one billion dollars to start the pension fund, all of those people who work for six years will now get a pension as though they started when they were eighteen years old. And that is only Jamaica. And I want you to listen to this, you know? Nowhere else, no other country on planet earth have that kind of pension plan. Only Jamaica under Andrew Michael Holness. But we did more than that. We said, all right, the benefits of tourism are to find a way to penetrate more. More of the local people must benefit from it. So we put one billion Jamaican dollars in the Exim Bank to be lent out now to all and several and many of the small entrepreneurs. And I call them a name because they call them in, in the Ministry of Commerce SMEs. And I say, no, no, OAS name S M T E's. That is the small and medium tourism enterprises. And the whole world take it up. And now I went to O A S last month to make the final speech as chairman of their tourism commission. And every country was saying S M T E because Jamaica established the small and medium tourism enterprises. So that billion dollars have already been lent to four hundred and forty-five small companies across Jamaica and they have borrowed twenty-five million dollars each payback. So the billion dollars that we put in there is now providing benefit valuing two point five billion and we still have seven hundred and fifty million to lend now for other people who want it. That is the government that cares and offers an opportunity for your development. But we didn't finish there. We went to the small business window of Jamaica National and we put in two hundred million dollars in there. And we said that is to lend to the taxi man and to the juke man and the jekyll man who can get three million dollars to borrow at a time at a rate of three percent. And during COVID, we suspended the interest rate. And we say that your unit must be fresh and crisp because when the visitor come and you finish with him, he must feel good. And when you go home now and to take your wife and your girlfriend and your children, the car must look good. And that's part of that. Now we are going to expand that and I will tell you more about that later on. I just tell you what we put in place, you know, and I'm telling you what we're coming with yet. And we say that if the workers are to really begin to get more benefit, we are going to have to train them, train them and certify them. So we established the Jamaica Centre for Tourism Innovation in 2017. And we started by going into your hotel and find competent people, people who do them job good, been working for many years, can't get promotion because them don't have no certificate. And we grant in and we have certified in five years, twenty-five thousand workers across the hotels of Jamaica. And what that allow you to do is to have what we call mobility, that mean you can move up. And we also have something else we call portability, that mean you can move up and down from one country and place to the other as a certified person. And we went to the American Hotel and Lodging Education Institute and the American Culinary Foundation. So now, last week, I inaugurated the first executive chef training program for them to get the American Culinary Foundation certificate. So our cooks can turn executive chef and earn big money in the hotels. And there were twenty of them in the program from six hotels and we expanding it. And then we went to thirty-three high schools and we put a program in there for them to get a certificate in hotel management and customer service. Last year, we graduated three hundred and fifty-eight. And as soon as they graduate, the companies just pick them up like that. Because what we are doing is to create a professional industry. And what we inherited from the other people was a casual working industry. Then we said, that's not enough. We said, the workers of the industry must now have security beyond the social safety net that we talk about and beyond the training and certification that we are talking about. They must also be able to have somewhere to rest and lay their heads. And we have a new policy that we have now put in place that any investor that is doing five hundred or more hotel room must have a component of accommodation for the workers who are going to work with them. And it is happening. Princess did five hundred. I have more to tell you. We with the Tourism Enhancement Fund spent one billion Jamaican dollars to create a new community in what is called a brownfield area, you know? You know the story. A lot of us get a piece of land and build a house. We know that is not right, you know? But we know the circumstances. So what we went in to do is to say, all right, we're going to work with you to regularize it, fix the roads, put in water, put in electricity and then turn around and tell you that we are going to sell you the thing at the price that you would have paid for when you moved there first. Never happened before anywhere. Go to Greenspan, five hundred and thirty-five families are there now in a nice setting, beautiful carpet road, nice electricity, water, sewage system setting up and they are paying for the lots. Most have done already and two weeks ago, I gave fifty-five people their titles for their lots. Are we doing it in Bel Air? Are we doing it in, um, in Negril, at Whitehall? Are we going to continue into Barrett Hall and a number of other communities? Because that is what we're about. We are saying that we are creating a new labour market arrangement, a new labour ecosystem for the workers of the industry. But listen to this one. So the other day, we had our little arguments because we know remuneration is an issue and we have to work on it. And the things I've told you about building stackable credentials, that is certificates and so on, it now puts us in a position where we are going to have to start classifying the workers. So we can remunerate according to classification. So when you walk in and you have your paper and you walk in and you have your experience, you are now a category one or a category two or category three worker in your different area and each category have a different remuneration. So you know what you're working for, you know what you're going to be getting. And so we starting out with some legal adjustments. And one of the reasons I don't give my budget speech yet is that we're working on making some adjustment to the income tax act as it relates to certain aspects of your remuneration in industry. Because the Prime Minister told you that. He said, we're going to remove the thing from the tips and so on. And we are going to make sure that those other areas of your earning, which has to do with your productivity and your special skill beyond what you do in your nine to five, when you get rewarded for it, we're not going to put no tax on it. And that is why I waited a little bit because we're working on it to make sure when I announce it for you, you know all the workers of the industry. It's a whole new ballgame that we're into. Your tourism industry is now at what we call the inflection point when we are now going to morph into another dimension of it. Why? Because your government has increased the arrivals up to three million stopover. That is the people who stay in hotel, not the cruise people now, you know? The people who stay in hotel, three million, you know what that mean? Equal to the amount of people in your population, a ratio now of one to one. When you reach to that state, you have gotten what we call the critical mass in tourism, which attracts all kinds of new investment, stairs and glares and interest. And now we also create a new set of demand for more agricultural goods from Minister Green, more roads from Minister Morgan, more water from Minister and of course, more knowledge and information and education from the Minister here of Education. So we have to look at ourselves in a different way now. And so we are having a historic moment in tourism in terms of investment. And I'm not saying anymore because I tell you I don't make the budget speech yet. And you don't want me to sound still when that time come. But just to know that this period that we're going into now, we are seeing investment like never before. And Jamaica is the only country where everybody who wanted to invest before COVID went through COVID with us and they are all still investing in Jamaica. And I will tell you the figures when I speak in the budget. And St. Anne is the parish that has now the strongest investment that is on the books. Finally, Cruise. And I want to say this because Cruise is itself experiencing an interesting moment and that's a very pedantic way of saying it. It is a moment that is challenging because some of our partners in the western itinerary are demuring from how they used to do the business and some of them don't want to expand to create larger ports. So we are having an issue with that. But your government, looking in the future, because we succeeded in taking Cruise from under a million to one point five million Cruise visitors, you know we have the capacity and the ability to take it beyond there. And so we are looking at building out an itinerary of its own for Jamaica so we can start home porting in Montego Bay and the ships can move around to the different ports in Jamaica. The pier that was damaged will be ready. And this evening, I double-checked and triple-checked before I came here. It is to be ready by the thirtieth of July this year. But we're doing more. We are improving the pier facilities to be able to accommodate two mega ships. But you know, when that happens, we now have to think about what we call the carrying capacity. That is what we have in the town to take care of that because there's fourteen thousand people you're going to have per day coming into Uchi. So we talking as a whole to change Uchi a little bit, to reimagine the town, to make it more amenable to this flow of people, to make sure that all of our players have an access to these people and they have access to them. And we in T E F are talking with the Port Authority and U D C and the local government mayor to look at a comprehensive refurbishing of the craft markets in the entire town of Otterius. The last time it was done, it was done by T E F if you remember. And we are going to be looking at that now, but we're going beyond that because the Ministry of Water, that has an underground facility at the Reynolds Pier, they have agreed to cover that whole area and to create a kind of a escarpment that covers the whole of that area and for us to move an element of our craft entrepreneurs onto that. So they are right there on the pier when the ship comes in. so they are right there on the pier when the ship comes in. So your government is not building tourism without you. Your government knows that as we grow, we must grow together. And we are going to stop at nothing to make sure that at the end of the day, the general benefit from tourism percolates to every average person who has an interest because we are driven by something called ideas. The power of tourism is ideas, and ideas are in people. And so we are going to incentivize those ideas. Pay you to have good ideas when you come up with good plans. Support you in it. Provide funding for the conversion of those ideas to meaningful and practical things that have a value and a price. And if you believe I'm just talking, we have already established in the TEF the Tourism Innovation Incubator. And we have twenty-three groups of young people who have no money but have ideas, who have no rich family but who have ideas. And already we've brought them in with the ideas. And some want to create a new kind of coral reef management out there in the ocean to provide a new kind of experience to the visitor. Some want to use AI. Some want to use all kind of new technologies to create experiences. And we say, come. And then we have put a hundred million Jamaican dollars in Exim Bank for them that when the ideas have germinated and are ready for startup, they have something to help them to start up. And those who can't start up, we connect them with companies that are operating in a similar space. And those who don't want to go to any company, don't want to be in startup, but they are creative souls, we use them to help to inspire other young people to become the persons that they want to be. What a government. What a future that you have. And that is why we say we choose Jamaica and we know a third term is assured because you, the people, are saying so.
The Honorable Edmund Bartlett showing how Jamaica wins when tourism wins and of course, localizing the discussion, showing you how things on the national landscape impact you in your communities. Now, it's been brought to my attention that in addition to a very full room here and dozens of people outside, we have over three thousand viewers watching online. So we want to acknowledge our online viewers, both locally and in diaspora. And this just goes to show how important fora like this are so that we have an opportunity to interrogate and hear from our leaders. Alright, so now we're going to open the floor for your questions. And so you'll notice there's a mic in the middle there. I'm going to ask that you go to the mic, you identify yourself, and you let us know to whom your question is going to be directed. And of course, there's a lot of you here, and we want to get in as many questions as we can within the short time that we have. So make sure to limit your question to the most pressing one. And if you have a statement, make it the most burning one. Alright, so we have one person at the mic. Please state your name to whom your question is directed and then proceed with your question.
Um, my name is Tennyson Williams. And my question will direct to Honorable Floyd Green and Honorable Edmund Bartlett. Um, Minister Green, I am a member of the Centre and Advisory Board, and we have discovered how excited you are in getting those programs on board. However, at the board level, we have not receiving the bulletin from the Ministry of Agriculture to state what are the programs that you are implementing and when you are implementing them. I want to commend Minister Dana Morrison, Minister of Education, for the tremendous work that she is doing. And I am also a member of a school board. And the ETO program started at our school. And last week, Dr. Stokes came, last week Tuesday, after his second visit, and he was amazed of what we have done in short period of time. I want to commend you for identifying the situation and brought it on board. My question to, um, Minister Bartlett. The Prime Minister, the Honourable Andrew Michael Onis, promised a public beach in each parish. In each parish. Two years ago, we did a consultation at Priory. We do two consultation. The joint was done and all the implements were put in place. And it was promised to us that within a year, the program would have started. What? When would that program start? Because we need to get that beach. That beach covers the whole entire half of St. Anne. Priory, Tangowood, Richmond, Bamboo, come all the way. That's the beach that they use. And we want to know when that beach will start in operation because at present, at present, people are using the space and there's no facility there. There's no receptacle here to collect garbage, and the place is getting a little filthy. We want to get that beach up and running and running properly. Okay, since that seemed to be the most popular of the questions, let me answer it quickly. Um, the program that we had was driven essentially by the TPDECO and TEF. And that was a smaller version of the development of these one beach, one beach facility per parish. So what has happened now is that that has been taken over. We still have an interest in it. And you will see the signs put up in another week or two out there because the program is now being procured. So that beach is one of three that will be done starting in this fiscal year. So you can be assured of that. Another one is Pajay in St. Mary and Success in St. James and Priory in St. Anne. So just to say, just to say quickly, very good point. Alright, so I will fix that to ensure that all the advisory boards get the programs of the ministry so that you can keep track of what is being implemented. As, as most of you should know, we do have standard programs. So we do have some crop lines that we support like Irish potato, onions. But we have some new programs that we've brought on stream. So just, just to say it quickly, we are supporting sweet potato, if you're interested in that. We are also trying to plant out orchards. So if you are interested in planting aki, breadfruit, mango, we will give you the plants free of cost. Right? So you can contact your rider office, right? That is, that is a program that we now have. Let us talk after. I don't want you, I don't want to disturb you. Let us talk after. And the final two. Small ruminants, goats, right? We're looking to drive goat production and freshwater fish farming. We have a program now. If you do a pond, if you do excavation, put in your pond liner, put in the water up to an acre, we will give you the fish free to start. Right? So we can't talk more about some of those initiatives.
Good. Good evening. My name is Claire Bruce, and I'm a craft trader. My question is to the Minister of Tourism, and I also have a question for my MP.
Testing, testing, testing. May we have it quiet, please? Thank you so much. And could you just speak into the mic? Thank you so much.
As I said before, good evening. My name is Claire Bruce. I'm a craft trader. My question is to the Minister of Tourism and a question also for my MP, Mr. Samouda. All I've heard tonight is good news, most of it. But I've not hearing any good news towards our craft traders, which is my heartbeat. It's no news that craft has been suffering for a long time. The guests are not coming into the craft market. We had a medium with Mr. Samouda a couple of months ago. There was no follow-up on that. We were asking for a free shuttle from the cruise ship here into the craft market. Every time a cruise ship comes in, we're asking for a free shuttle. We're asking through the, at the TEF could fund that for the free shuttle to come into the craft market. We are diverse people. We know how to entertain our guests. We have our authentic goods in the market selling, and we'd like to see the guests in the market. They are being diverted to other places and things that are being talking about they're selling things that are coming from China. That's what they're going to other places to buy. But we as craft traders have the authentic stuff mixed with everything that the guest needs. We can give them entertainment. Anything that they need, we can give them because we're diverse people. So my question to the Minister of Tourism, when are the guests coming to the craft market? And how can it be done? My question to Mr. Samouda. It is all good and well that you're giving water all over the place, but please remember that person christening picnic first. Taking smart tea, St. Anne. Don't run all over the place, and then you're tired out yourself. And when you do, what if you do for pineapple? For, um, dirty St. Anne, you run out of time. Fix Ochores. Fix Ochores.
Alright, thank you so much.
Beautify Ochores. Let us see Ochores sparkling like a diamond that it is. We need to see it. Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Okay, Ms. Bruce, I heard you loud and clear. I...
Quiet. Please allow the minister an opportunity to respond.
I, um, I am concerned about the general movement of, um, guests in the communities. Not just Ochores, but all across. And it's been, it's been a problem because of how the cruise itself is structured, as you know. However, the issue of the shuttle is new to me. And I will definitely take that up because I see that as a possible avenue to enable. So I speak with Mr. Roberts about it and see how we can move that forward, okay?
So, to clear my good friend, I think since the weather event of February 2024, which is a few months before I became MP, since that weather event, I've met with the craft market vendors five times since that period. Five times, and we've dealt with several issues, including your UDC registration issues and other particular issues, and extended the license period for our craft vendors. Now, I can assure you that regardless of whether I go to West Maland or St. Thomas, I'm still in the constituency four to five days a week. And I'm ensuring we christen our picnic first, which is why we paved Buckfield last week, which is why we paving Falklands in a couple of weeks, which is why we did hog hole the other day when it was giving you a hard time, which is why we're breaking ground from, what is it? Um, Walkers, Walkers Wood to Red Nut Hill because we are making sure we christen the picnic first, excuse me. But I am here four to five days a week, and I think most of you can attest to that. I'd make the point in relation to Ochores and its cleanliness. There is no debate that can be had that Ochores doesn't need a lot of work. No, no debate can be had. But I can assure you that if you evaluate since October 8th of last year, and Minister Bartlett can tell you, I find him wherever in the world he is, whenever we see a particular corridor looking dirty. And just two weeks ago, we were doing maintenance work from Island Village to the clock. It is why that area was desilted. It is why those curbs were painted. Last year, we were very unhappy with the condition of the verges right throughout northeast St. Anne, I'd say from northwest St. Anne straight through. And TPDECO has made a significant effort in dealing with all of the verges in the spaces. But we have paved several roads. What took five years to deteriorate can't fix since October 8th, clear. We need five years to fix what went wrong in five years. Now, what I can assure you is that what has been done since October 8th, which is when I became Member of Parliament, is more numerically than has been done for the four years before. That is a statistical fact. More curbs painted, more roads patched, more tons of garbage removed. We've done three bulk waste removals in recent time in Ochores. We've partnered with the DAC, Clifton Reader, and the private sector certainly in Christmas for a cleanup. And we have a major cleanup coming also for Ochores, Senans Bay, and many other areas for Labor Day where you will see the work going into that space during that time. But I do want to make one other point. It is not by accident that the Water Commission pump, which is right in front of the pier, has been designated to be decked over, which will still allow the pump to operate, to create a new craft market that will be used on an alternating basis by our craft vendors, putting you within walking distance of the tourists that will be coming off the ship, the fourteen thousand tourists that we expect to get to very soon. So we're giving greater access to our craft vendors while also not ignoring the markets in the current state that they are as Minister Bartlett has announced, and we will be doing renovations.
Alright, thank you, Minister Samouda. Ladies and gentlemen, I see the question line is getting a little long. So just a dental reminder to limit your question to one and also to help us out by remaining as quiet as possible while the question is being asked and answered. You can go ahead and ask your question.
Good night, everyone. My name is Janelle Pitt. My question is to Minister Morgan. I, we see the Spark Program going around and the Reach Program. What we would like to know is if it is that you're going to extend this program because we still have a lot of roads that need fixing.
Thank you very much. So recently, we announced a 1.5 billion dollar patching program. So we had emergency reach last year, which was $2 billion, which you would have seen us do a lot of work in and around St. Anne, including the Ochores Town. Then we had a normal reach, which was about $3 billion, where each MP got $20 million, which is what we're finishing up now. And we're going to continue with the first quarterly patching. So we're going to do quarterly patching every quarter, and that is 1.5 billion dollars. And we will be designated in important sections of this constituency. We do not plan to stop fixing the roads. So for the next 12 months, we'll be doing the Reach Program. We'll be doing the Spark Program. And wherever we see the issues come up, we're going to ensure that we find the resources to address them. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister Morgan. Again, I just want to ask you to keep it quiet as possible or as quiet as possible while the questions are being asked and answered. And remember that just because it isn't your question doesn't mean you can't benefit from the answer, right? So, uh, you know, help us by remaining as quiet as possible and listening to the responses because they might be helpful to you as well. You can go ahead with your question.
Greetings to all who is here and across our island home. Uh, my question is, now before I go, choose Jamaica. Jamaica, raw nature. And when I look and see what is taking place...
And when I look and see what is taking place across the island, I feel lift our hands and give Prime Minister thanks. My question is for Minister of Education. Minister of Education, you have a lot of youth across the country. I was reading about some youth, they took off the road in town, windscreen wiper, and the government put them through like art, carried them to art and to learn a skill that they can to be marketable. But two or three of them turn back, go back to their old hobbies. Start, because they say they can't, they can't work for that. They can't work on the construction either. One mentions them get $2,000 by, on three, on three, $3,000. But instead, that cannot carry them. So they gone back to their old hobbies. So what can we do to help them? So my agenda is for our children. So that is my few words. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Thank you for your question. And we have done a program for the windscreen wipers on the road. And as I've said, every child is important. And you raise a very good question. Why are they there? Why are they there in the first place? And we do have a big breakdown in parenting in Jamaica. And it's something that we don't like to talk about. And we're feeling it in the schools because we're seeing children come to school who have no parents at home doing any parenting. And that is what we are having to try to fix with these windscreen wipers. Now, the thing is that some of them have been saved and some haven't. And I think we have to celebrate those that have been saved from that life and have taken on a skill and can actually have a real job. And what we have to do is to continue to encourage those that have gone back. Because if they get their skill, if they finish with heart, they're going to make a lot more money. But for many of them, this is the life they know. This is the world they know. And we have to help them because they don't have no parents. They don't have any family. They have been abandoned. And so we're working with our Child Protection and Family Service Agency to try to give them additional support. Some of them are on drugs. Some of them have other psychological issues going on. And so, yes, your first intervention may not work for all of them. But we're committed to intervening, intervening, intervening until we're able to reach them. For those who have drug issues, and it's the same thing with some of our programs in Hart, you know, let me just tell you. Some of our children come into some of the Hart programs addicted to drugs. So when we do our Hart programs, I don't talk about it much, but we have the Council on Drug Abuse working with us to help them too. Because they can't do the skills training if we don't deal with their addiction issues. So some of them have done well on the program. Some need some more work, and we're not going to stop. We're going to continue working to get all of them off the streets.
Thank you, Minister. You can go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Cleo Tan Stone, Minister of Education. She wants a question. I would really want to know if you have a child going to a school. Listen, and he go two day late, two day reach late. You have a life, he teaches, principals, and can't come back at the school. Except we are for bringing him come to school just that he would like, you know.
So you want to know if there are policies in terms of lateness and so on, alright? Lateness is a problem across many schools in Jamaica. A lot of children come late to school. Now, the thing is that we want our children to come on time, but there are sometimes factors that make them late. Sometimes it is transportation, which is why I said we're putting in the rural bus system to help with that problem. And then sometimes it's not that. And so if you are having issues in terms of transporting the child to school, because you and I would have to talk about the unique issue. The key thing for us in the ministry is that children must be at school. So there are rules though, you know. There are rules that need to be followed, but our children need to be at school. So if you have an issue with rules not being followed and children being sent out of school inappropriately, please tell me, tell the ministry because we will intervene, and we have intervened with schools like that. So let us know the particular issue, and we will intervene for you.
Alright, thank you, Minister. You can go ahead with your question.
Good night. My name is Evelyn Griffiths. My question is to the Ministry of Education. Miss, what about the children with special needs? Not every children on this land have come to know education. You need to visit that school in Senans Bay. You have a lot of children with special needs.
Alright, I am glad you brought up that issue of special needs because it's one that is very dear to my heart. And you know why it's dear to my heart? I have a child with special needs.
Yes, my last question is...
And has gone through the system, and the system is not built for children with special needs. That's the reality, and that's what we're fixing as government. And so there are a couple of things that we're doing in relation to special needs. So some of the studies around the world show that we're going to see more children with special needs in the coming years. So what that means is that we in Jamaica have to be prepared for more students coming into the classroom with special needs. So what we're doing, we have, so we're trying to get more teachers of special needs. That's the first thing we need, right? And so we have scholarships available for anyone who wants to study special needs so we can get more teachers. The other thing is diagnosing special needs. So you see the child, you know something is going on, but you don't know what it is. Is it autism? Is it ADHD? Is it an intellectual disability of some sort? And so one of the things the government is doing is adding another diagnostic center. So we're putting in $180 million this year at Case in Portland to add another diagnostic center so that people can take their children. Because a lot of people in Portland, St. Mary, and St. Thomas have to go into Kingston. And so we're putting in a new diagnostic center. In addition to that, we have added more shadows because some of the special needs children need shadows. And if you need a shadow, please reach out to the ministry's regional office so that we can discuss supporting your child with a shadow to sit with that child throughout the day. We've also doubled the stipend. We're paying the shadows who sit with the special needs children, and we're working to increase the number of spots for special needs children. And so there are a lot of things that we're working on. We also believe every teacher is going to have a special need child in their class because the numbers are showing us that. And so recently, I was at Shortwood Teachers College, where they're teaching the teachers in training how to deal with children in their classroom with special needs and how to spot special needs. So there's a lot of work happening, and we have to do more because they are special. And last week, I went to one Randolph Lopez School in Kingston. And those children were just amazing. One little girl who has an intellectual disability said to me, her dream is that one day I will come and eat at her restaurant. And I think she can do it. And at that school with children with big disabilities, there are severe disabilities, some less severe. They have a room where they're teaching cosmetology. They're teaching them to the nails and hair and all of that. So what we have to do is to see them as real people who can have real futures. And that's what we're focused on as this government. This is a priority of ours, and I'd love to hear your ideas at another time in terms of how we can even do more. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Minister, for that very fulsome response. You can go ahead with your question.
Good evening, everyone. All porticoes observe. Now, I have been here...
You didn't tell us your name.
Oh, hi. I'm Dion Johnson. I have been hearing a lot of lovely stuff, and I know that this government have been doing great things under this Ministry of Honourable and Your Wholeness. But there is a missing aspect when it come on to that unemployment section, and it's a missing age group. I believe that age group is the, what you call the mid-age. And it's a deep problem. Some of us are unemployed, need employment. Some of us need a scope in which we can develop ourselves and be self-employed. Now, I've not heard from any of the ministers. This is where I want you to look at that little area because many of us have the ability. We might be over 45. We have that ability. And trust me, I hear you talk about AI. Many of us are also getting ourselves up in that so that we can move with the technology. What is it, ministers, I ask of you, that you take it back to the Prime Minister and you sit down and think of us? In that age group, we're out here, and remember, labor rights. We don't like handouts, isn't it? So I just like for, I heard Minister Edmund spoke about the youngsters, where they're doing with the REVE program. Training also, how can you help us? Who is going to answer that for me?
Okay, alright, I'll start. I'll start with retraining, right? Which is a big thing. And actually, if you look at the numbers at Hart, for example, there are a lot of old... There are a lot of older people now going back to do training. Recently, I saw someone who I used to work with in the financial services sector. And I saw her, and she told me she's retired. And I said, what you're doing now? And she said, I'm at Hart, getting a new skill. So we believe that there's a lot of opportunity. We've even said to people in the BPO sector that retirees or those who are in their 50s and above may actually be good targets in that sector. And some of the call centers have actually said to us, oh, you know, we never thought about that. But that is something that they're starting to explore. And the retraining elements, I think all of our ministries have retraining programs, whether it's in farming or tourism or in Hart, that we're targeting that group. But you make a very good point that we need to speak about it much more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, let us hear your name and your question and to whom it is directed.
My name is Lorna Francis. My question is directed to Minister Samouda. Sir?
You can ask the question. Go ahead.
Just to say, there are still some communities in the constituency that is still without running water. In my constituency, in my area that I live, there is no running water over in Farmers Heights. There's also other areas in Centon that is still without running water. One, I'd like to know what the government can do to fix that. And two, sir, can you give us an update on the black tank project? Thank you.
So there is no constituency in Jamaica that doesn't have an area or areas that do, that exist outside of the utility footprint, meaning don't have either portable water or official connections to light, etc. Northeast is no exception. But in line of the question that came from Claire earlier, certainly passing half a christening picnic first. Now, it is why, starting from east to west, I'll just give you a quick run-through of some of the things that we'll be doing over the coming months. Chin Street, I mentioned in exchange, is to commence shortly. That should take about three weeks of construction. And that will significantly change the experience. We completed the line in Lanswood a few months ago, so that area is complete. We are breaking ground in June for a new line from Walkers Wood to the highest point in Bread Nut Hill that will then feed through all of Great Pond, Warwick Mount to Dunsville. We are also working on expansion and improvements of the bog treatment plant that will allow continued growth in population pretty much for all of Exchange, Otrius into the, I would say, the northern side of Stere Town. Now, we are about to commence through the parish council funded by Rural Water Works in Hermitage and Davis Town, which will expand their utility footprint. That area has the same issue like what you have in Farmers Heights. Moving further along the corridor, you see that we're expanding the main transmission line, which will move water from Bog all the way along the corridor to Landover. Now, beyond that, there are some particular issues in the Centon's Bay pocket. The formalization issue in the section of Civil Heights that doesn't have titles, etc. We're working with JESIF, and we expect to be there in the first Friday, I believe, in June, Council Dickinson. And we'll be looking at light sign-ups and JPS sign-ups and indeed water connections. As it relates to Farmers Heights, the problem in terms of the utility footprint extension cost there will cost approximately $280 million to give all of Farmers Heights water. That has to go through what you call the PIAB process under law, meaning it has to be examined by the Ministry of Finance before it can be done. The engineering is finished, so it is ready for submission to PIAB. But that will take approximately a year to fix. Where will be fixed long before is those who are fed by the liberty system and having significant issue in New Banks and heading up towards Kima, etc. Those areas will see much benefit before. But beyond that, there are two areas even within the township of Senans Bay that have significant water issue. That's the Top Road community and indeed Marcus Garvey Way, those who are fed along those lines. The line on Marcus Garvey Way will actually be replaced in the coming weeks by Water Commission. And the line along Top Road will also be replaced in the coming weeks by the Water Commission. So we have a number of water projects right throughout the constituency that will significantly improve water supply. Farmers Heights is the single largest problem and the most expensive one that we need to put in, so that will take some more time, Miss Lorna.
Thank you, Minister.
An update on the black tanks.
The government has purchased 10,000 black tanks that are being equally distributed across every constituency. Every Member of Parliament is, has access to 150. We have 1,200 requests in the office. So how we have approached it is the first 150 that requested get first, and then when the next 150 come, those who then requested second get in that order. We're doing it in order of who requested first, and we're working through that list. But we have 1,200 requests in Northeast Centon. Now, for context, in 2019 through RADA, the CDF program, the constituency of Northeast Centon was able to distribute 22. We have already done since January 150 in this constituency, just for context. But yes, there are still another 1,000 persons who do want.
Thank you, Minister. Alright. Remember, ladies and gentlemen, to give your full attention when the questions are being asked and answered. It is very difficult for the ministers to be able to respond when it's noisy and also for us to hear the questions when it's noisy. So we ask again that you be as quiet as possible while the questions are being asked so that we can quickly finish this section. Thank you so much. You can go ahead with your question, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Carol Miller. I am the Managing Director of Island Destinatory and Travel. I also represent Jutaw Otrius. I'm a member also. Minister Samouda spoke earlier, and he said, there's no point in sugarcoating anything, so he's just going to say it as it is. Well, I'm of that nature as well. Earlier this year, Minister, you came and you met with a group of us at the Otrius Pier. And some concerns were brought to your attention. You made a commitment to come back, which you did not. I am going to take into consideration that with your portfolio as a minister, that you have a whole lot on your plate. So I am going to assume, sir, So I am going to assume, sir, that it is because of those responsibilities we have not heard back from you. That's one. Mister, Minister Bartlett, you spoke early about the TAF fund and the three percent or the three million dollars that tourism partners can access. Now that, sir, is like pulling tooth and nail to access three million dollars. Yes, sir. Also, a coaster bus now for any member of whether Juta, Maxi, Island Destiny, Jicol is thirteen million, one hundred and sixty dollars. So if we are going to be able to access three million dollars, where are we supposed to get the other ten million dollars from? Because if we were to borrow this from another commercial bank at an eleven percent payback, sir, at this point in time, when the economy, well, let's, let's talk about the cruise ship. A lot of the members depend on the cruise ships. We only have one shipping port nowadays. So if I am to go and borrow three million dollars from the TAF and go to a NCB for argument's sake and borrow the other eleven million dollars, at what percentage am I going to be paying back that money? Because I'm gonna have to take in consideration your three percent or five percent and then add another eleven percent to that. How do you plan to address this for us?
So firstly, recall now that the arrangement is to assist, to enable you to keep the units fresh and crisp. Unfortunately, we would love to be able to provide you with the debt arrangements for a new bus. Of course, we would like to, but the resources are not there. And you know, there are six thousand, seven hundred licensees out there with transportation and I'm proud of it. When I became Minister first, it was three thousand plus and that has increased in the eight years to six thousand, seven hundred. Consider if we were to provide debt support for brand-new buses at thirty million dollars each. So appreciate that this is really to assist, to ensure that you keep the units fresh and crisp. Now, it is true that that three million needs some revision. And I'm quite prepared for us to look at that, you know, in, in the new cycle. But work with me on this one, it's difficult.
Appreciate it very much.
You, in the meeting we had with transport operators, you raised three primary issues. One was the scale of the TAF financing, which Minister Bartlett has just addressed. The second issue was the parking arrangements and access to be able to connect with the tourists coming off of the cruise ship. And the other was the badge issue with Transport Authority. All three issues have been raised with the relevant ministers. And at the appropriate time, as it relates to the parking issue, we'll make an official announcement on that, but it's not at an announcement stage. Now, the issues haven't changed since our meeting, but the solutions are not yet complete. As soon as we're in a space to tell you something concrete, because I'm not gonna give you a pie in the sky, as soon as we're in a position to say, on this date, this will be the parking space, this is the amendment to the badge arrangement and this is how we hope to help you with financing, then we'll come back and tell you that information definitively. Because I don't believe in talking for talking's sake. There are concrete things happening, we'll announce them soon. So in the same way, in that same week we had a meeting, one of the issues raised to me from the craft vendors was the fact that they were having difficulty getting their licenses renewed between UDC and TPDEC. We were able to get the extension of the UDC period significantly and resolve their TPDEC licensing issue. So we had the follow-up meeting on that one. We've not yet resolved your issues. As soon as they're at a place where I can make a concrete announcement or announce something to you, whether it is good or bad, we'll have that follow-up meeting.
Thank you, Minister. Yes, sir, go ahead with your question.
Good afternoon, uh, my name is Bernard Suarez. I should say at this time, through Mr Morgan, um, the Tourism Minister Bartlett and Mathis Samuda, we all in tourism in this area should say thank you and welcome for the cruise ship coming. Everybody, one, two, three. But I hit you here, the contractor made a big mistake. Wherever, whenever a contraction is done, a development, a small truck could be used to transport those stuff for approximately three hundred meters for the repair of that port. It had to be, material had to be manually carried. It's a suggestion, I hope it's well taken. Thank you. Jamaica Tourism, backing Otterios Cruise Ship, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your suggestion, which we are happy to consider. Thank you so much, you may go ahead with your question.
Blessed, good night. My name is Annette Borell. I thank you all for everything you're doing for us, in Jesus's name. And I hope you continue. I love you all, blessed.
Thank you. Well, we did say comments as well as questions, so we thank you for that review. You can go ahead with your question, Miss IRFM.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Markelia Rumble from IRFM News and my question.
Ladies and gentlemen, let us have it as quiet as possible, please, while we finish up the Q and A. Go ahead.
My question is for Minister Samuda, the Minister with Responsibility for Water. So at a recent meeting at the Saint Anne Municipal Corporation, a public health inspector revealed that there were elevated total and fecal coliform levels in the water at Dunsville Falls. So you, I want to know that if it's this, if this is true and what is being done to address this concern, suggesting that the water is contaminated.
There, there isn't a, a body of water on planet Earth that doesn't have some coliform levels. The way public health samples these systems, it gives you a snapshot in a moment of time. Meaning a child could have been in the water at the same time and had an accident and that could have registered in your testing. The government has shown very clearly that if there are water quality issues in any part of our leisure environment, we have no problem closing that particular area. Recently, we would have closed the Harmony Cove Beach because there was a water quality issue that needed to be fixed. In years gone by, we have closed Helshire Beach when there was a water quality issue. I assure you, for any body of water that you see operating it is because there is no public health emergency that warrants any closure. There was an elevated sample that was checked. Follow-up samples have shown that Dunsville, the world famous Dunsville is as safe as it has ever been. And we encourage all of those of you to visit and when you do visit, make sure you pass through the craft market first.
Thank you, Minister, thank you for that. Go ahead with your question, ma'am. And remember to give our persons asking question your full attention. That means listening, um, and remaining as quiet as possible. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Varan Daily Coburn and my question goes to the Minister of Education. Um, I worked at the school as a cook and I'm also the piero of the school that is in Exchange Primary, what they call Exchange College, but it's primary now. I have two issues, the crossing of the children. Minister, there are nobody out there crossing them. And I know, God forbid, if I in your bed tonight and yes, somebody, a car knock down one tomorrow morning, it won't, you're not gonna feel good. And it's been going for quite some couple of years, well now. Because my daughter out there from grade one and she's in grade five now. And you need to adjust that as quickly as possible. And the next thing, we need a security, we badly in need of security and cameras. Because too much vandalism, we have a lot of vandalism. And we need it. We need, we need, we need it urgent, urgent, urgent.
I'm, I'm gonna take a note of all that you've asked for. We do have some wardens through national security. I'll work to see what we can do to help you with that and that school. And then in terms of the, the other areas, I've noted them and we will, we'll action them for you, all right?
Thank you, Minister. Yes, ma'am, you can go ahead with your question.
Good night to everyone. My question, I have two questions, or at least two concerns. And it's directed to the Minister of Education. Okay, madam, I know that you are new, you just come on board. But I'm one of the longtime veteran early childhood teacher. And we have been having problems in the basic schools. For example, we are governed by the ECC and we have twelve standards that we have to come up with, right? To operate as an early childhood institution. However, what I'm concerned about, there are so many things that ECC requires. And most of the basic schools, they are community schools and the schools are in rural areas and so forth. And the standards need so many things and the school do not have the money to upgrade the school to the standard that the ECC requires. I know that, um, Minister Ruel Reed, when he was there, he had some good things for early childhood, the basic school teachers, but we all know what happened. Everything fall down. Again, with the teachers, right? They get subsidy from the Ministry of Education. And what I realize, although I've upgraded myself to a MOE trained teacher, but I'm still in the system and I am the college-trained teacher at that institution where I am. But I'm still concerned because the teachers there, the subsidy, they increase, it goes according to each time the minimum wage goes up. Then the subsidy is tied to the minimum wage. They have gotten an increase from it was six thousand to nine thousand. Now the minimum wage is at fifteen going to sixteen thousand. And now they still don't get a raise. And these are our babies. You have to have people like myself for the foundation. Because without the foundation, you do not have the primary and the I. We are the ones who wipe the noses, we are the one who clean the doodoo. And yet, early childhood teachers, especially in the basic schools, they are not getting anything of substance. So madam, minister, I'm pleading tonight and behalf of my colleagues to see what you can do for us. Although I have upgraded myself, but I'm still in the system and I heard the cry every day and I have to work with them. So please, I'm asking you, I asked my Prime Minister two years ago, what are you doing for basic schools? So I want something to go back and tell my colleagues, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you for your question. And early childhood is indeed the foundation. And I think for those who are listening, I have to explain the system a little bit. So we have different, um, early childhood institutions. So you have some that are government infant schools and then you have others that are private and that charge fees to the parents. So she's speaking to the ones that are private and charge fees. So the government ones, the government pays everything for the infant department. It's pay all the teachers, everybody. But then there are private ones that charge the children fees, but they have been asking for the government to also pay the fees for the, help with the fees for the teachers. So that is what she is asking about. Now, obviously, we have to focus on early childhood. And so we're looking at what that subsidy can be. But remember, these are private institutions. And so we have to work within a particular framework. One of the things we're doing also is providing scholarships so that more of the early childhood educators can be like you and therefore be the main teacher and get a teacher salary. And so I encourage all of the persons in the early childhood sector to take use of the scholarships. Not enough people are taking up those scholarships. And so that is very important that you do. But we are looking at the subsidy, we're also looking at the standards. Because the standards are very, very high and it's very difficult to reach them. Now, the thing is, we want the best for our children. We want them to be in an environment that's safe. And a lot of the, and a lot of the standards are about safety at the school. And that's important. But we also have to recognize that there may be different grades that we have to give. So we're, we're about to start that review of the standards and whether or not where we're going is the right way. And we won't do it without you at the table. So you will have to be at the table with us, giving us your experience with it so that we can fix it better. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Minister. I am seeing four persons left in the line, so we're gonna take the first of those four final questions. You can go ahead.
Good evening, beautiful people. And a special good evening to four of my favorite ministers on the platform. All right, um, I have, my name is Trisha Harris Smiley, I have two questions. Uh, first, Minister Samuda, I want to commend you, sir, on the water extension that you did in the Shore Park Heights. And you even did that before you became Member of Parliament. So on behalf of the citizens of Shore Park Heights, I really want to, you know, commend you for that. We see that you're very proactive, sir. However, the residents, they are asking, when is the extension of that pipeline is going to continue? Uh, to the beautiful Minister of Education, uh, Mrs Mars Dixon. All right, I have a grave concern as it relates to the unattached youths. And it's not unique to Northeast Saint Anne, but Jamaica, uh, as it relates to a lot of people. And it takes in adults too, where they are complaining that Hart, they're, they want to attend Hart. However, when it comes on to the qualification, because they know have to do an entry test, which includes maths and English at the grade nine level. And we all know that we have a lot of persons who are not academically inclined. Persons had to drop out of school because of various challenges, various reasons. And some of them, they don't really interested to do this maths and English. However, they really want to get the skills. So I am asking if there's any provisions made for persons like those, uh, student, students and adults alike. Because I heard the lovely lady, she was mentioning about the middle-aged persons and I was over there sharing with somebody that Hart is the best place to go, right? I have entered university, yes, but Hart was my university. It was my first university. And I'm sharing this with other persons, if you do not have any C X subjects, that is not the end of the road for you. Hart is there and thanks to our government, our beloved Prime Minister, who has extended from level one to level four. And it has, the level four is an associate degree, technical degree, right? And you have it free of cost and now you can get a nice stipend and transportation if you're not working to assist you in that. Because a lot of person oftentimes said there is no job. But yes, when I look on certain sites and I'm talking about credible sites and the governments have. and the governments have services commission, the amount of jobs that are there, and they pay really good. And all you need is to have a skill, a Hart certification to get those jobs in any ministry or in any private or public sector. Because Hart is recognized and it's full time. We big up Hart and stop believe that it's only the traditional universities count. Hart is up there and we are stepping up. And as I said before, the government is showing the world that we can be qualified and go out there and get the jobs wherever we want to get it. Not only Jamaica, all right? So I would like to know that from both of you. Thank you.
So Shaw Park Heights was, I think, one of the first communities I visited when I was displaying interest in, in becoming a Member of Parliament. And I was told the story of 2001, when the pipes were put on the side of the road before a particular by-election and then taken up after. So for me, it's incredibly important that we end the legacy of no water supply in Shaw Park Heights as quickly as is absolutely possible. Now, the rest of the extension will require about 28 million dollars. Now, I have asked the parish council to help us with the project for Shaw Park Heights and for the Hermitage and Davistown area because of how stretched the water commission and rural water supply limited is. So for those two projects, we've already committed the funds to the parish council and asked them to procure the work and oversee it. So it's going through the process now. I would expect that before the end of June, certainly by early July, we should be doing more construction to complete the extension of that pipeline in Shaw Park Heights and bring that sordid history to an end and give everybody potable water in that area.
All right, thank you for speaking up about Hart and your journey because you started at Hart and look at you now, doing so wonderful. And that's what we need to tell people. Hart is a stepping stone to somewhere else. And there are many, many people around the world who are demanding skilled laborers. In the world, plumbers are in short supply. And that's a reality. Electricians are in short supply globally. And in the tourism sector, they've been saying they need plumbers and electricians. So there are, if you go to Hart and do those things, there is work waiting for you. But we do have some children who are young people, older people, who don't have maths and English and who aren't literate. And so we've been, it depends on the program you're applying for. Some programs need maths and English. And if you don't have it, what I say to you is start with one of the programs that's close to it, that doesn't need maths and English. At Hart, we also do remedial maths and English. So there are people who are there doing maths and English at City and Gills and getting their certification. So if you don't have maths and English, Hart will actually work with you to get the maths and English if it's really a career that you really want to go into. So don't let that stop you. Even the farm workers, Minister Green insisted, and others, and also Minister Charles, that when someone is not taken on the farm work program because they're not literate, that they be referred to Hart so that we can work with them and we can do the literacy programs with them. So there are many opportunities. And if that person sits down with us in Hart, we can figure out what's the best route for them. So if you don't have maths and English, don't worry. There are some programs that need it, but there are others that don't need it.
I was not aware of that, so no, I can pass it on.
Please do.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just to note that, um, we are almost at 10 o'clock. We have been gathered here since 6 o'clock. So unfortunately, we do only have time for three additional questions. I indicated there were four persons, so we stopped the line at the fourth person after the, the person who just spoke. So go ahead with your question and after that, we'll take two more.
Good evening. Good evening, Erin McClair. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Keisha Eccleston. And I'm a member of the Ocho Reyes Craft Market. And I am the Acting Secretary for the Jamaica Craft Traders and Producers, where we actively have an committee in place where we oversee all craft markets across the island. My concern is, I have two questions. One, on behalf of my market, which is Ocho Reyes. Um, I have to refer my question to Mr. Samouda, the Member of Parliament. And he accommodated us through a meeting on October of last year for the first meeting. And I want to second Ms. Bruce because he has tried to assist us. And in terms of the assistance, he made assurance that through lack of business to the craft markets, we are unable to do business. I have been doing craft for 25 years. That's my occupation. So that is my breadwinner, craft. And other persons in the craft industry is also their breadwinners. We asked for a bus shuttle. Ms. Bruce said one, but I want to correct because we did and said it was two. Because it was five craft markets in the regions. So that's pineapple, Ocho Reyes, Old Market, Dunn's River, and Coconut Grove. So we were saying one would be insufficient if we could get some assistance from, from guests from the ship. And P. Samouda, um, said, yes, you will try to assist us by getting some funds from the T E F. So far, we haven't received any response as yet. As to the national body, I want to ask this one to Mr. Ed Bartlett, the Minister of Tourism. So it's my first opportunity where I get to speak to you directly. We have an issue where craft traders are currently under the Ministry of Industry, Investment and Commerce. We said there is not sufficient craft traders who can produce to that mass amount to, for the Jamaica craft traders because we don't have the tools, we don't have the assistance. So we wrote to the Prime Minister officially. You, sir, Mr. Edmund Bartlett, the Minister of Tourism, and Mr. Orbin Hill, that's the Minister of Industry and Commerce. And we wanted, we asked to be removed from under the Ministry of Industry and Commerce to under the Ministry of Tourism where we believe we belong. So most of the times when we try to refer to you, sir, Bartlett, we get to understand that we are not under your ministry. So we feel a waste, sir, because we deal directly with tourists. So it doesn't look good to say we are craft traders and we are not under the Ministry of Tourism. So we have a problem with that, sir. We wrote to the Prime Minister and yourself and Mr. Orbin Hill, and we haven't gotten a response, sir. We would love to hear how you could deal with that situation to put us where we belong. Because we are tired of hearing the guests saying to us that we made their vacation. So they love us and we are Jamaicans in Jamaica doing business. So we want to benefit from tourists coming into our country. Thank you, sir. I'm listening, I'm listening.
So on the subject of the buses and the shuttles, T E F is a major source of funding, but it's not the, the only one. There's also the Port Authority and U D C through SADCO. We've had discussions with all three, but all three bodies have had revenues impacted by the very same period that has affected you at this stage. When the period reopens at July, we expect revenues to rebound. And there is a deep understanding and commitment to help craft traders once we're able so to do. I've raised the issue with Minister Bartlett, I've raised the issue with Port Authority, we've raised the issue with U D C. As soon as it is possible, we'll start with the first shuttle. I don't remember two, admittedly, and I don't see clear not in either. But we'll start with one and we'll see how that works from there.
Before you speak, sir, I want to say, on behalf of the Jamaican government, we did get some assistance from the government through the announcement by the Prime Minister. So I'm very sorry I didn't mention that. So we really appreciate that.
Did you say it again? Because people would, would sometimes don't remember that there's an amnesty on fees for craft traders. That I lobbed it for, for you after our meeting. So let me just throw that back out.
We, we craft traders, we give on to seize what is due. So we appreciate the announcement from the Prime Minister to waiver the rents for craft traders. So it, it is not everything, but it helps out a lot of craft traders. And we have to be grateful.
So, so I love you too, you know? Um, and I hear what you say. It's kind of above my pay grade, but I hear what you say. So I can leave it there, all right?
All right, thank you. At five minutes to 10, we have room for literally only the last two questions. I appreciate your understanding. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kamisha Riley. And my question is to Ministry, Minister of Education, Ms. Dana Dixon. Okay, so we would have, um, done with PEP for grade six students last week. And my concern is that I am a supervisor for the exam as well as Vice President for a school in the constituency. Now, we have students leaving or doing PEP that are non-starters, right? And it is a grave concern when these students come in the class, the classroom, the exam room and are unable to read. Now, a report would have been sent out to the ministry asking for assistance. Now, the parents would not be able to afford to send the child to Michael, right? It's like a $10,000 fee for each student to go to Michael in order to be able to get an assistance from the ministry. So those students would have come in unable to complete their exam, but they're moving on to high school. Now, my question is, is there, um, an implement put in place for these students that are coming in now from grade four, grade three, four, five, and will be in grade six next year, going to high school? What implement is in place for them? I know you would have mentioned about students with, um, challenges and going into the Western region. Now, if these parents are not able to afford even a fare to go down to Michael, will, they, I'm not sure if they will be able to afford a fare to go in. So I'm asking, will there be, um, one of these organization here in Saint Anne for these challenges that these students are facing and these parents who are unable to accommodate it?
Right, yes, there will be. And I thank you for that question, and this is very important. The reality is, we really don't want any child reaching grade six and can't read. That is a problem. And that's why we're changing the timetable in September to make reading mandatory, grade one, two, and three. Because we cannot afford to have them at grade six not able to read. Now, the reality is, we do have some of that. Um, but the, we don't want in another three years, there should not be any children, unless they have an intellectual disability, right? No one should be leaving primary school unable to read. That is our commitment to you. Now, in terms of what we're doing, in terms of the assessments, you're correct. It's hard to get the assessments at Michael or some of the other centers that we have. And we want to roll out more centers. But guess what the problem is? We don't have enough people skilled in doing the assessments in Jamaica. And so what we're doing this year, working with UE, UE is offering courses now to do the diagnostic work. And so we want people who have an interest in this area to sign up for these programs and ministries offering scholarships because we don't have enough people to do the assessments. That's the reality. So even if I opened another one in Ocho Reyes, which we'd love to do, I don't have the staff to do it right now because we don't have those skills in Jamaica. The other thing we don't have skills in Jamaica that UE is now starting to offer programs is, for example, especially on these children who need speech therapy or occupational therapy. That's very hard to get an appointment. Um, that's just because there are not enough of them. And so we're now starting to train more people at UE. It's not gonna solve everything right away. It takes them some years to do the training. But we're looking on the horizon. In three years, it will be a different environment in these areas. And then we can open up more centers where we can do this work. But we're starting to put the things in place to address your questions.
Thank you, Minister. And to the lady who has the pleasure of closing us out this evening at 10 o'clock, you can go ahead with your question.
My ques, I'm Ms. Lauren Alexander from Mansfield Heights. I'm a vendor of the Marcus Garvey Technical High School. My question is to the Minister of Education. We have a set of students where from Monday to Friday, there are big fight on the road. They, they just fight from the top, come to the bottom. I am begging the minister, please, to appoint two policemen to come and control them in the evening.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, I will speak to, I'll speak to the region and to the JCF to have that happen. We're taking a note of it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you.
So just on that, on that subject, Marcus Garvey High School, a meeting was held sometime last week with the school board, principal, and the, the new superintendent in charge of, of Saint Anne. Um, so that issue is, is indeed being addressed already, all right? So I think it's a, it's a real issue. Because you're having issues as far as the Senans Bay Library with a huge fight the other day. So I am very well aware of it and very concerned as well. So we've raised the matter with the police already.
All right, thank you, Minister. Since you are the last person in the line, we're gonna go ahead and facilitate your question. So you can go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Gibbs. I live at Farm Grove and I'm asking about the gully, the gutter right there. It's, it's break up a lot of, um, it's a lot of holes in it and the water is running. Nobody know where water is going. And it needs some fixing, what can?
So I'm very happy that Minister Morgan is here because his team came and, and started an engineering assessment. So the gully right from the SBA church, pretty much right to the plaza behind Fontana, extending all the way into Buckfield, needs to be redone. It's a 40-year, um, year-old drainage system that is overdone. But the N W A has come and done assessments. And I'm glad you have raised it because I will use it as part of my lobbying with Minister Morgan to get the funds to fix it. But we are aware of the issue and they are doing the engineering assessment on it. But thank you for raising the issue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so we are at the end. And I just want to say thank you to everyone for being here. You stayed all the way until the end. There will be other series in these Choose Jamaica series. So please look out for the next one. Want to thank you all for being here, for staying all the way until the end. From Minister Morris Dixon to Minister Bartlett, Minister Samouda, Minister Green, Minister Morgan, we're all so glad that you are here to be with us again. Please tune in for the next in the series. We look forward to seeing you in person and online. Have a good evening and get home safely.